Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Scottsville Meeting Stream Recording for the Town Council Work Session. Today is Monday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Matt Lawless, Officer of Scottsville's Town Administrator. Our meeting this evening is held in compliance with the State Streaming Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. We're meeting physically at the Town Hall, four oh one Valley Street. And there are also opportunities for both Town Council and the public to participate and attend our meeting remotely by phone or by Zoom. This work session does not include a public comment period or public hearing, but everyone is welcome to view along and share their thoughts on the meeting. The local time here now is two minutes until seven o'clock before it starts time for the meeting. We're still setting up a room and assembling our forum, so I'll mute this line until we come forward. Thank you.
We had called here to order and I often have just the bowling. I can see you in person.
Happy to be here.
Yes, sir. Happy to have you. Let's go ahead and start with Chief Jenkins and his report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, significant calls for service. You can see that in your first bullet there. We marched twenty-first and April the eleventh, three hundred and eleven, a number of catalytic converters. Anything from inside the town where it's. We spent hours going through the video of some of the businesses down on Eastern Street for the catalytic burst of third. And ah, we spent four hours looking at one store's video, couldn't find anything. And then in order, found pictures. There were a sound section of video. So the the picture that that I was catching back was with several that we were captured. Posted these out on the police department's Facebook page and following, of course, if not really.
Yeah, it's granny.
But uh, believe it or not, got a couple of calls and got a call last Friday that gave us a name of who this is. So we.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So we went back and got the video. If it's who we think it is, it's got a very distinct call. So we'll have to look at the video again and see if that law. So we, I don't know. We we may have a suspect named in it, but uh. We'll see. We'll see. It continues on a whole. It's a lot of always always go obvious and that's. But that, I know that that coffee doesn't really do well, but even looking at the video itself, it does, but it's not very good. Follow the video.
Chief, were they all in one general area or were they spread through the town?
Yes, Brandon. They were in one area down on Spring Street, the garage and period. And then both of them were destroyed. Believe it or not, they were gone a little further up this way. He's over there.
That's what I had heard.
So they got two catalytic converters at East Green. And thought they had gotten third one, but it resonated wrong to believe instead of the catalytic converter.
Hmm.
But they were trying. Um, on April the eighteenth, we responded to a domestic situation at Scottsville Elementary. Um, Detective Water and Rescue One were a mess at the same place that served on suspect. School had locked down initially because of the threat. And once he was taken into custody, uh, the school reopened back to normal operations. Uh, last two weeks ago, uh, cardiac arrest at the Hoonan Park Lot. Rescue was reported to be going to hand tops. So the wife of the man said that she was going to transport him to the hospital herself. I said, well, he's capable of riding, putting him on the taxi in my life and we're not bad. Well, I'm probably one with him to the PDC C lower parking lot or rescue mat. They would do the handoff with the man and rescue. But Mike called me the next evening and thanked us for saving her husband's life. She said, you headed back as quick as you did. He would most likely have died.
Wow.
He did live. He survived. Um, my last talking to her at the end of the week last week, he was still in the hospital, but. And suffered a heart attack, but we got him to rescue when enough time to where he did survive.
Wow, great.
It's an everything.
Before you move on, she was. I forgot the gentleman's name, Mr. Mayor, you might remember. Who, when, when we were talking about the departments, who was the gentleman from uh, West Houston? Showed us like how long it takes them to respond to things sometimes and.
Was it the back of your car?
It was a car. It's, yeah, sorry. Uh, Michael car, thank you. And he had mentioned a couple of things that were concerning to me, and this kind of reinforces what he was talking about. But don't we have backup? Isn't, is it Lake Monticello that's supposed to be their backup or something? Who do we talk to?
The way.
And say, this is unacceptable. Like, there's gotta be somebody in Albemarle who can understand, even if it's another bus or, you know, something.
Chief Eggleston is the one that's in charge. His um. I, I thought that they were manning that station uh, out at the rescue squad twenty-four seven is the way I understood it, but the way. I read it now is they staff it one day a week, twenty-four seven. The rest of the time, it's not staffed twenty-four seven is the way I understand it. Um.
Is that Albemarle? Whose position is that? Albemarle County? I, I, I mean. People, people are gonna die. I mean, this is crazy.
Another in the dollars here next Monday night.
Okay, because honestly, if you hadn't responded that quickly or even said, get in my car, like.
It would have been an hour transport for them to get to Scottsville and to get back to.
Yeah, this is.
It would have been an hour.
I, I mean, it.
But we.
Some, some, and, and that's wonderful and that, that's exciting news and I'm very happy for them. Someday, somebody is gonna die because of this, because. Right, we've talked about. We, we, we deserve, we deserve to have our citizens able to get to a hospital. In a dire situation. That's what people call nine one one four and if they can't respond, then they're doing something wrong.
Today, they had just left Wilkins having lunch. And an elderly friend of mine had spoken in West Wilkins, so they were back in the flash and transported her to the hospital. I haven't heard about what she's doing. She's in her nineties. But she had spoken at lunch and they had just gotten away from eating lunch, so she looked out.
That they just happened to be there.
They just happened to be blocking two ways. Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. What's your report?
No, I, I was just surprised, as the council, when I, I learned that they were just set in that ability and they're going to study.
Yeah, it sounds like a weird concentration of time. Is it like set that hotspot there?
Find one day and which day?
Since their, their whole reason for taking over our rescue squad was because we didn't have the personnel to run it sufficiently.
Right.
Well, they didn't. They're not making a good example, not justifying what they did.
It's never happened to the money that it was.
That is, I asked, uh, asked Mr. Payne about that. They, some of the old rescue squad people were having a picnic up at Hatton Berry. Uh, Saturday afternoon when we were up there for the Hatton Berry event. And I asked him about that and he says they still haven't gotten a decision on it and they already spent a hundred thousand on the lawyers. And probably gonna spend some more before this final thing, because somebody is dragging their feet. I don't, he made a name, he gave a name. I don't know who it was. I don't know that person, but he said somebody was dragging their feet. Matt and I had had a meeting with one of the uh, former officers of the rescue squad, gosh, what, last year sometime? And um, she was, she talked like it was almost settled then and they were gonna get four hundred thousand dollars, but it's not settling.
After lawyers. Yeah.
Well, they started with five hundred thousand. So anyhow, you got anything else, Chief?
No, I do have more.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, seeing a couple of community events, uh, we've been busy uh, with the community events, engaging with the children at the elementary school and here in the town. Also, we also donated forty-seven dollars their time uh, this past month. The bar uh, here today. We had what, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one seven dollars in savings for the department. We did a meeting with, I met with Regional Pan and we're still working through the mental health. Uh, fortune with their uh, CTAC unit up there. Uh, we're gonna hopefully be able to sign MOU with Admiral County PD. And uh, what this unit over here will do is voluntary committals uh, to crisis, uh, for crisis. Uh, for some nonviolent easter goals, Monday through Friday. Nine to five, came over here to the Regional Pan Building and they will actually. With custody of them, do the evaluations there and that type of stuff, which will help three hour officers up and back into the town. And uh, be in the thing that is supported here. But that's still a worthy progress, so uh, I'm hopeful that uh, the town will give us the MOU when we get that signed and it's just another one of those layers that will help us. You had asked me to, uh, they applied for, it was already. Then I put in that email that I sent the council. I sent you all that email. It was a one point two, one point four, ninety dollars. And uh, what that, their goal is is the building, that C-TAC building and unit over there and hopefully. Extend those hours more from eight to five until a little bit later in the evenings. That type of stuff. So I think for us, the way to be supported is on our overlap pay, put our officers on their schedule. If they need staff up there, command those positions, that position up there, that there is a. A officer that stays up there with them, actually, you can't, but it's a very relaxed.
Is that at the regional?
Regional, it's at Regional Pan, it's not Regional.
Okay.
So at least we will give a help support that instead. And I know you were there in the first one, so I can't believe that you're like, there was. That's the part of it. So I think this might be one of the ones in the town, and the town really supports that effort. Right. Um, we had a SARP meeting. So counter mode. We have been working on this spreadsheet for a while. And I hope and that this captures a lot of good data. I know Mr. Martin, you had asked about data. So these are the types of calls for service and we're gonna do. Uh, January through the end of the year, like you have requested, council.
Thank you.
So it just tracks the calls for service or types of call for service. Multi-total calls for service, we have a fourth, uh, first four months for our police department, the six hundred and fifty-seven calls for service. Uh, calls for service in the town of Scottsville itself, three hundred and fifteen. Calls for service outside of the town was three hundred and forty-two, which is at us supporting Admiral PD down here on the south side of the town. Tracking tickets in the mornings per month. Um, right now, total stops, we have a hundred and thirty-six total stops. See, the clouds are, the sun, a hundred and thirty-six total suns. I'm sorry. And each month, under each month, you can tell, you can see the number of stops. If the storey will rest, uh, as of, in the April, we had the team of the storey will rest.
But it's extra patrol.
Um, so a lot of uh, our citizens and businesses will ask us after hours, they're close or something's been going on in your location. Can you all kind of come back and do some ride, ride throughs and. Drive away, as I would say, provide assistance, make sure that you're the city police in the area. And I hope to know what's going on.
I uh. I love this breakdown. It makes me feel better about. What I thought was private, you know what I mean? Because when, when you see how many calls we're getting. I mean, that significant number of them are that extra patrol. That's not really criminal activity. That's the.
Word for men.
Yeah, it's like, you know, when you see for the entire year so far. For the, you know what I mean? Like. Crime seems to be much more, more than I thought it was. And then I started getting really sad about it, just seeing how many calls we're getting. Uh, doing better than we were.
You feel better about that?
I do. Yes, I mean, I've got such a significant number of, of things, I would like for the extra patrol.
I wrote on my, that's miscellaneous thing.
Uh, miscellaneous criminal.
Never helped.
Gosh. Help the mayor.
Ernest T., Ernest T. Bassel rocks the window.
Could be.
Fractions.
Could be. Uh, question for some news.
Uh, so it's my.
Yeah, we're done calling one of these other categories, they're classified as miscellaneous.
Like an officer discretion thing. If the officer tells him, maybe now cut that foolishness out and he continues to do it, he's gonna get arrested. Yeah, it hasn't risen to the level of an arrestable offense yet, but he has uh, been warned that it could or used.
Um. Oh, I, I, that's. I have another question today. The house not held, um, I think a lot of carry guns, not a lot of shootout, so it'd be carry guns, you can carry that, sorry. But in the town, in the town, they can, uh, this, uh. If you go practice shooting here, okay, I'm sorry.
I hear them, I hear them. But I feel like a lot of it.
Yeah.
Might be, I, I mean, that's loud, you know what I mean? Like, they could be outside of. It's Harry.
We had a shots fired call just last Thursday or Friday on Hardware Street.
Oh, really?
Neighbor called, pretty good idea where it was coming from, but.
Yeah, okay.
When we talked to them, oh, what knows?
Yeah, but very short watch everything.
But.
And then I have one more question. This is brand new. So now I, I wanna know what they all are. Uh. Suspicious activity. It remains in that suspicious activity category. Does that mean it was not criminal? Cause you got a call, something that was a little weird, but that. Wasn't criminal?
Yeah, it does. I guess it became criminal if the call is something. Hold on, it's sort of a, sort of a missing. Yeah, but it's suspicious, there is suspicious, first thing could be. Something someone saw that didn't look right or looked out of place and they lost the back of the step to call.
Somebody standing in front of your apartment at three thirty in the morning, just staring at your apartment.
Yeah.
Your eyes, I say, what you doing here? Oh, walking home, I got lost.
So I hope that you meet your satisfaction, absolutely.
More than means, yeah. Fire excuse, chief, thank you. Uh, one question I have for you is on the number of calls outside of town. Do we have any sense from Albemarle, uh, how many calls they have for Scottsville that they service?
Yeah, well, I can break it down. And the last year I was breaking down. Uh, up from January to December of last year, the town police department was handling right at ninety-two percent of calls. Uh, I just learned yesterday morning, I want to respond to a crash interception, peace lane in Valley Street.
Hmm.
I was off, so they responded. So they help us and we help them. If, if we're not in the town, our laws are interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I can certainly start scratching that information out again. If you would like to know how often they're handling calls.
The only, the only reason I would want to know, we have an MOU in place or at least it's at some stage. It's complete now? Yes. So um, you know, we're always talking to the county about response times and they say, oh, we give you all of this. We provide. Fill in for your police department. We provide this and that. I just wanna make sure it's like a commensurate level. Like if we're handling ninety-two percent and they're handling eight percent, but yet say. This is a big benefit to the town. I'm not sure it's a big benefit as maybe they might think it is. So I would just like to understand that. Does that, does that make sense?
It does make, but I will also say with respect that. I've got an officer that's going on vacation this week.
Uh-huh.
It's, there are a few of us in the town. For twenty hours. And if we can't be here all of that time. It gives me a very much a sense of, um, I wouldn't say satisfaction, but a sense of security to know. That our law does have the resources that's needed here that they're gonna come down here and serve the town.
Okay.
They provide us all of the support, the firing range, all of our records management stuff that provides at no call. Range and no calls.
Okay.
Um, they do provide us a lot.
Okay, that's good to know. And then, you know, you don't need to break it down for me. That's as long as you feel that we're, you know. That we're getting benefit of that, because that is a response and I have never had any clarity as to what that is. So I'm glad you pointed that out. Thank you. The auxiliary officers, that one really.
Yeah, yeah. Those guys are the uh, Tom and John, um. They come down and ride. John provides all of our IT support. Um, internet is down today. A colleague who's accessing my computer, didn't even back up. Y'all want. Within ten minutes, I'm running again. Uh, all of our poly cameras and all of our in-person, all of our computer stuff upgraded. Doesn't matter. Tom comes out and rides and provides that extra vital on the streets.
I want to know, what, what is the benefit with that? What is it that's making them do best?
Well, I will tell you that they, it's a sense of community, having support. Um.
I did it for ten years before I moved here. I was an auxiliary officer. I had all the powers that the chief has, except I didn't get a paycheck. I did it like forty hours a month.
These guys really, you know, John wasn't born and raised in the town, but Tom has been born and raised around here. John, you know, he started working with the department before I come here and. You know, I'll tell you his exact words. We're glad you're here and we love the way the department's been here in the month and the crackhead is on and we keep moving. Move in the town, Scottsville. And they let him come down here and work.
Commendable, really. I mean, the whole staff is kind of.
So you're gonna be here for a few minutes?
Yes, sir.
Because I have something I want you to hear when I give my report.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it might be to sit around with the budget part.
Okay.
That would probably be a good idea.
Schedule, yeah. Chamber of Commerce uh, reported that we just had, we had a board meeting this past Wednesday. We just talked about uh, upcoming events like Beto on June the twenty-first and maybe some fall things and uh. Uh. We talked about the uh, advertising of our businesses and um. The new Scottsville Monthly that should be out at the end of this week, hopefully. And uh, how we could highlight a business each month, or it's about monthly, so every, every edition we could highlight a business. So that was pretty much it for. Chamber.
I was gonna say something, I don't know if you guys hear this, but it's a chamber that the county should recognize. For, I just feel like the South Farmacy, they make, again, they, they provided a great service for years and it would be good to. Acknowledge that somehow, either with us or somehow to say, thank you for your service and, sorry, it's the leader.
Well, back, you know, we haven't done it during the, much during the pandemic, but we as a town. Presented certificates of appreciation to businesses after they've been here a year, what, five years, ten years, twenty years. At, at, at a council meeting. We recognize them through here and I see what you're saying. I just don't know how.
Yeah.
You know, if, if the former pharmacist, not, not Claire, but the owner of the business. Lived here in town, we could certainly invite him in and, and present him with those certificates, but uh. I don't even know where he lives and I'm gonna get to that. That's part of my report when I get to, to that in a few minutes. So um, any chamber questions or ARB, anything on ARB to report?
Yes, my Thursday, we were, the meeting, we sent one topic to go over, something about fencing, I have a Vici's over there, forget the address of the house. The homeowner zoomed in, um, it was pretty efficient. We had a little notebooks with all the kind of rules and regulations and stuff. I think we made those, they're very helpful.
Yeah.
Um, we approved it and there's been nice guys back there now. Yes, now I think that owner expressed happiness with the efficiency and kind of quick process and just expecting kind of a battle on it. Hopefully, most of them continue to go like that.
Yeah.
But mostly they won't, but uh, if we can keep it like that, it would be very helpful.
Yeah, if the citizens follow the proper procedure, it usually turns out in their favors, the ones that don't wanna, that will go by the rules that have the problems.
Can I just interject one thing, Alex? So I'm getting together small groups to work on the goals for the strategic objectives that we had done as a group. And I was wondering if you could put a call out to anybody on the ARB that might want to join in. And it's on a volunteer basis, so if they do, great, if not, great. We've got a few volunteers that are ready, so.
Hello.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Brissette? Planning Commission, Mr. Grisco, any reports?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned to you, that I would be late because of the tour and the art show, but glad to be here. One of the things that was probably a highlight of the planning commission meeting was our summer intern. Matt, could you mention a little bit more about Lincoln? Uh, one of the things that's interesting about him is that. He comes at a very high level as an intern. Normally, we have interns that are. Maybe in there um, going for a master's or something. He's actually going for his PhD and I don't know what his thesis is in, but how did we score him, Matt?
Um, he's, he's here. I'll let him uh, introduce.
Oh, there he is.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Lincoln, can you hear me?
I think we got you.
You can hear me now?
Yeah. I think we got you now.
You can hear me, yes?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, uh, great to meet everyone. Uh, my name is Lincoln. I'm a PhD student at the University of Virginia, uh, School of Architecture. I'm uh, doing my PhD uh, on uh, basically the context of the eastern shore of Virginia. But um, my background is in architecture. I'm a licensed architect, but I've never worked in local government, so I see this as a really. Unique opportunity to uh, help Scottsville on their comprehensive plan. Um, I worked a little bit uh, on the project of kind of creating a community engagement process last semester. And um, we submitted for the uh, APA, the American Planning Association Award. Uh, recently, we, we won an award for the, the work that we did for the comprehensive plan so far, so that's a bit of good news that came through recently. Um, otherwise, uh, looking forward, I, I'm really excited to uh, come to meetings in person after I finish this semester next week. Uh, planning on coming uh, to all your Monday meetings and being working at this uh, some days of the week. Thanks so much. Glad to talk more.
Thank you. Thank you, Lincoln, and.
Are you just for the summer or a couple of months or what's your? You hear me?
Could you hear that, Lincoln? He was asking what your, how long will you be with us?
Are you gonna be here just for Mondays or?
Uh, I'll be, um, you know, working with you for the summer, um, but I'll be here in Charlotte. working with you for the summer, um, but I'll be here in Charlottesville for the next four more years. So I'm glad to kind of help out whenever I can, but really for now, just gonna focus on the summer. I understand the comprehensive plan is likely gonna take, uh, until November, December from our, uh, previous discussions. Um, at our next special meeting that's on Monday the twenty-second, uh, I'm gonna put forward to the planning commission, uh, a brief Gantt chart and some, uh, steps we can take forward to kind of work together, uh, how, how we can break this comp plan into some manageable, uh, goals to achieve, you know, completion sometime this year. Hopefully, that answered your question. Sorry, it's, I'm here in Panera at Barracks Road, it's a little noisy.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. And just to mention, as we talked about the comprehensive plan at the planning commission meeting, there was a lot of excitement about Lincoln's involvement because of both his area of expertise and also the need for help, because it's such a formative project and an important project, so he will be helping with our chair in term, determining in terms of how we will proceed, and he's gonna present and not some ideas about that the next meeting. A sad note we had was that one of our commissioners will be stepping down, so there'll be an opening on the planning commission. Shannon is stepping it down due to family matters. So that is sad to see that we have that opening. We also had a conversation about our vote that we had previously about how we decided to give the usage, um, and the, kind of a conversation about when the original plan was introduced to the planning commission, all the information wasn't there, it would have been a different process. How, how we voted last, uh, town council, for Dina's property.
Well, Dina's property.
Yeah, so there was kind of a explanation of how we did what we did and what, why we didn't do what we did at the planning commission, so a little bit of an explanation back and forth about that, and mostly the sentiment was, had the planning commission had more information prior, there probably would have been a different process that we would have gone through, and it wouldn't have come to us exactly the same way, because they didn't have, we didn't have, as a planning commission, that information before, so.
One of the commissioners, uh, spoke to me, actually, I think it was before your meeting, I think it was Monday, but I had a pretty in-depth conversation with, uh, Molly, I don't know if I can just say who it was. Uh, she was upset and I couldn't answer, and maybe these were answers that you gave and I wasn't at the planning commission, so I missed it, but but she then had me curious about it too. Um, why planning commission voted it all out of it, but not on the commission's side? She, she was wondering, you know, if she had all this idea, but I was talking to her, I was like, she gave us, she had diet right on this and, you know, all sort of stuff. And she was wondering why planning commission can't just push their vote out of us, so that that could be reviewed instead of voting on it that night without any of the information.
To my remembrance, good question, to my remembrance, Matt, wasn't it time-driven? It was like we had to have an answer, to my understanding, by that point, and so the planning commission voted not to recommend it. And, but it was also based on the information that was available at the time, which was much less robust than what we had.
So you guys have a much smaller time.
I don't remember the, I know when we had it, we were constrained to do, I, I guess or no, honestly.
I just, when, when we were talking about it, I was like, I had a, my had a vote, she said, I thought we were pushing it anyway.
It was an odd.
So it was, it was.
Yeah, and it was good, so, so you might say the planning commission was saying, why did the town council do what it did, and the town council was saying, why did the planning commission do what it did?
Right. Well, and I, I was gonna bring up a point about that, because in this discussion on strategic, um, goals and objectives, we talked about this, and we need to have a more clear documented process between the planning commission and town council. Because it was my assumption that it had gone through a, a planning commission in a regular fashion, but yet it seemed like there were some steps that maybe were missed, and we weren't aware of that. So when we got it, we thought, okay, that process was complete, but it really wasn't. So there was a lot of things, a lot of steps that were unclear, so we need to clarify that and make sure that anything that comes through the council has already been cleared. That doesn't mean we, we have to vote in the same venue, but it certainly should be, it should weigh in heavily, um, our. Pardon? Yes. And we talked about that, having decisions written.
Yeah, we can't yes or no, but, you know, when, when we make our decision.
We don't get a lot.
No, it is.
Right.
You either say yes or you say no, but exactly, we don't know why.
Right.
I mean, there, there could be a no, that is no, because it doesn't follow any ordinance, you know what I mean? And then that's.
Yeah, that was, again, this was a kind of a unusual, but yes, it totally was.
Well, we didn't get clarity, at least I didn't feel we had clarity about why there was a no, other than we just felt there wasn't a lot of information there, and given the timely nature of the decision, it seemed like it wasn't unreasonable to vote yes on the proposal, so we need to get those boundaries clarified.
I totally agree.
Question, planning commission, well, since you have vacancy, is our planning commission's, what was different also, is that an internally elected thing?
It's, I think we have to appoint somebody. Oh, we as a town council have to appoint somebody over to plan.
We're, we're looking for a resident. To, uh, yeah.
Is it broken up, residents and?
They, uh, they have, it's okay, they, they have to live in town. Um, they can be new in town, they don't even need to be a voter, um, they just have to live here. We also have law that a majority of them need to be property owners, so we're limited to two out of five being renters, and we have one.
Okay, we also have a reappointment, so Commissioner Andrew Vine also is up for reappointment in June, I don't remember the date, so it's two, so we as a council have to reappoint her.
Okay, is there, Mr. Ball, is there a time of, like, it would be for a council seat that we have to fill out vacancy bar?
Um, I don't think there is. All right. But I'll look into that and let you know.
Okay.
I think generally, you, you just, you know, you need to fill it so that they don't have quarrel.
Yeah.
At least, and we obviously need to talk to our friends.
What, what she was, what Matt was talking about before is that, I'm not sure of the precise procedural circumstances, but once, once the planning commission has before a plat change or a plat to approve or not disapprove, they have to act within sixty days and it's submitted to.
Oh, okay, so they have a time.
They're, they're the ones that have the time, yeah.
What was the problem against nature? Is that one of the sixty days?
Yeah, and then the, she didn't do the survey until after getting the planning commission feedback of, well, this is awfully vague, and so then she hustled and did her survey, responding to that feedback.
And then, but then was she, then she had to submit a plat to them, right, or didn't?
They, yeah, they, they did, they did the actual subdivision plat after the rezoning. But the, the subdivision wasn't legal until the rezoning was done, so she could only show you a draft survey.
Okay, and then they had sixty days of the survey presenting to the back of that, okay.
We also talked about the Poplar Spring road. Uh, Kevin? No, this is.
Talk about the Airbnb's, three little, uh, Airbnb's up there.
We, at the planning commission voted to, uh, recommended to go to a public hearing, is that correct, the way to say it? So we agreed with the proposal, this is Kevin Quick's proposal to put potentially three small cabins on, of the bluff on Poplar Springs, and the planning commission thought it was basically a good idea, but it, it will have to go to public hearing, it'll come to you guys at ARB, it'll go through several steps.
Poplar Spring is the, the.
Oh, the lawn.
Yeah.
It's like a little bit of.
For, like, a hundred yards or something.
It's in that tiny, it's in that tiny spot.
When the bluff is.
Above the laundromat.
Above the laundromat.
And they, they, I think, uh, is that a word about whether, whether they wanted or didn't want it, or what in particular, maybe that we just have a real clarity about any issues involved there.
I think it would come back to.
Was there some issues that, uh, I think I've heard of this issue.
Not really, and I, we didn't have any.
They did, they did, they're gonna put three houses there, right?
He, so that's.
It's tangible.
Well, he, what he's asking for is that will be the upper end of what he could do. He might put one, and then put, put a second, and might put a third, but.
They'd be trying to.
Yeah, it's the little cabins, they're.
They're really cute. But Matt does have it.
These, these are in an area, Pendleton County of West Virginia, that I frequent, this kind of stuff is super common, these little kind of places.
And it's not, or, what's it called?
That's correct, it's, it's, um, residential.
It's village residential, so this tourist.
One there or two?
The tourist lodgings use is.
Houses, it'd just be one house.
Everyone has, right?
It's one lot, yes.
But I think in terms of plan, the comprehensive plan, one of the things that I've been reading about these, you know, smaller homes, you know, people are finding it very difficult to purchase homes. Uh, they call, uh, some of them alternative dwelling units, the ADUs. Um, there was a legislation at the state level to deal with, like, in-law suite or having one, you know, smaller home on your property in accordance with your main property. Uh, there are some places, uh, it didn't get passed at the state level, so they kicked it back to the counties. This is something as the housing prices sort of ramps up that we may have to deal with more. So it may be something to factor into the comprehensive plan about how we want to deal with, uh, ADUs with small houses. And also, if you could relay to the planning commission about accessibility and ADA issues, we're talking a lot, I've talked to a lot of people about crosswalks and curb bulbs and flashing lights and things. I was trying to cross here in front of, um, Victory Hall, and somebody had parked in the the, it happened across walk and half in, you know, the no parking zone, right, they were parked there. Getting, getting stuff, I was like, where's Chief James, I want him right now.
Oh, no, I know better.
But, um, uh, I think we need to address that, and I had to step pretty far out into traffic to see around the cars, and I'm thinking, if I had a baby carriage, if I was in a wheelchair, that would be a really dangerous situation. So I think we need, you know, if we're gonna be a walkable town, I think we need to address those issues, and I think the comprehensive plan might be a place to start with some of them.
Was that the, uh, planning commission working on, or have they completed a Airbnb policy, or is that part of the lodging policy, is it? That, uh, is that separate? Do you know much about that?
It was not completed to my. It was, it was, we've kind of balanced it a couple of months.
So, uh, they're gonna continue working on that, or is that? I think, oh, it seems like, you know, a major thing that could get done, because these guys are, I'm not very reluctant. We have about eight or ten of these things down, I'm going real, I don't think.
If, if I remember correctly, and it's Shannon's idea, so now she's stepping down, how quickly she stepped in, I don't know how we're going forward on it. Uh, the plan was for us to meet again.
Oh, you were there?
I wasn't on the planning mission, but we did have a, we did have a joint meeting, what, a year ago? Um, with the understanding that we were gonna have another one that was more like a work session type meeting, having Airbnb to be one of the main topics that we discovered, and I think it kind of felt a little cramped a little bit.
Might not be, I mean, it certainly goes back to the comprehensive plan and to figure out how do we address it.
Yes, it's great.
I know.
Almost anything, they, they're gonna be. But put these in and bring in more tourists.
Well, there, Airbnb takes away a level of house.
That's not with that, then you stop them.
I know, it increases, it increases on the tourist side of it.
Right. And I don't know how tightly we need to regulate, but we need to have one view of how we deal with that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're short on downtown affordable rentals. So my feeling is, like, I need, you know, an eight hundred dollar apartment that somebody could be looking at to turn into an Airbnb. But I love Airbnb, you know, something like this, but there's nothing there. Direct, yeah.
I thought we're getting also. But, yeah, Airbnb also, but that would, I thought that was some talk about that, I we could refer back to Reddit, and so that would be a consideration.
Yes, go, no, please.
Do you know that? Is that the group?
Planning Commission did discuss that, sir, um, and it was clear in this application that these units were only, the application was only requested for the tourist lodgings use, and that an apartment conversion would not be allowed there.
Well, they could.
Um, and.
That's good to know.
Yes, um, so that, that's clear here, and the application is clearly.
Back and forth, I'm sorry.
On this one, on any one, but we never do that.
Um, it's, it was, it's different where on, on these like Valley Street upstairs apartments where they have a history of switching back and forth between those uses, and the upstairs residential use is allowed. So when you approve one of those special use permits, you're adding a new property right, and the old one doesn't go away. Here, the request is just for the one, and that multifamily use does not exist base. And if, if Mr. Quick were here, he would be quick to point out that these are, um, mobile units, they're, they're trailer sized. So they have this skirting on them, but he's very clear that they have resale value, and if this business model of his fails, um, these can be resold and carted away, and he may then build a house on the site. And that right remains.
I know, I get you. I, I am, I'm off.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on planning?
Sorry, the last thing I was gonna say is, two of the planning commissioners volunteered to work with our fellow town councilor on her project, so we, we are, that was kind of a ask, and they're both interested in helping. Yeah, Mr..
Good, treasurer's report.
Thank you, sir. Um, Javier and I have been focused closely on your, um, budget work for the next fiscal year, which is coming up later on in our agenda. But also monitoring the current fiscal year, which only has two months left on it. So we watch our final spending closely, and also monitor the revenues coming in to make sure those hit the targets. There are a couple of lines that were a little slow to come in. Um, it was a, a slow bookkeeping day at Admiral County Office, so they, they were a little late getting us some sales tax reimbursement. But that did come in today, and the numbers were good. There's a lag between the time you swipe your credit card at Christmas time. The sales tax goes to Richmond. They divvy it up by formula and send it back to the county, and then they divvy it up by another formula and send it back to us, so.
So we're just, are we just getting the Christmas?
We got, we got Christmas, but today we got the January and February reimbursements.
You need to judge that, yes.
And so those were, those were on target, but it gives you an idea of the lag that the, the nature of the law and multiple bookkeeping offices, it takes it a while for it to get, for it to get to us.
And is that normal? That's a usual delay?
I think they forgot one month. A three-month lag doesn't surprise me, but we got January and February at the same time, and they forgot the one.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're tracking down business license enforcement, um, as well, and we had in particular, um, one of our large businesses where it's a, a chain. Um, they have multiple locations as well, so a, a out-of-state bookkeeper, um, paid the county what the town tax was, they forgot the town existed, and paid for all of their Admiral businesses to one place. So we noticed that, that they were late, called the county, they said, yes, we did get this overpayment. They set up a credit, and now the business is gonna pay us. So we'll sort it out, but those are the kind of things that, you know, in the, in the routine of bill pay, we noticed that the revenue was not on target, we tracked down what's going on and find it, especially.
Notice, but you had to go to that.
Well, no, that Pat noticed.
Yes, we know, we noticed that it was missing, because it was, you know, they, they get.
County doesn't care.
They get tens of millions in revenue, so one, one check might slip their mind, but we, we noticed one big check. Um, so those, that's the kind of revenue that we, that we stay on. Um, we have seen a pickup in, uh, parking ticket revenue from, um, from the police focusing up on that. Um, so we're setting up that payment routine. That was not something the town did aggressively at all for several years, so we didn't have a, um, routine paper trail on how to process that, and they're only ten-dollar parking tickets, but, but so far, the, um, payment response from folks has been good. Um, so we'll work on that, and you may have an enforcement question down the line of what volume of unpaid parking tickets might you see before you wanted to take someone to court for a, um, Town Organs violation?
Why don't you boot them?
Yeah.
Go ahead. That gets it paid.
It does.
Anything else for Matt?
That's what it is, it's our plan, summons and make them go to court instead of.
Yeah, but then you have to go to court too. Yeah, that's true. There's a, there's an elaborate procedure for these parking tickets too.
Mm-hmm.
That you have to comply with, that's the trouble. Any other questions from Matt? All right, um, my report, um, mentioned the chamber. Um, been working on a, um, temporary administrative. Been working on a um temporary administrator, which we'll get to in our closing session. Uh Saturday was such a nice day, uh visited as many businesses on Valley Street as I could to say hey. And then uh Councilmember Morse and I ended up at the Hatton Ferry. Uh this is pretty neat, a year ago, February, on a cold February afternoon at the Historical Society. A family by the name of Wright gave the Historical Society twenty-five thousand dollars. Which was used to pull the Hatton Ferry back over to this side of the river, lift it up out of water, get it shipshape, make sure it floated, got it ready to go. And they had not been down to see it since it's been back in the water, so Mr. Wright and his wife wasn't feeling well, Saturday, they uh grew up in this area. Um his father was a manager of the Alberene Soapstone Company. His mother's farm is where University Village now sits. And he lives in South Carolina, so he came up to see the Hatton Ferry. And brought with him a check for a hundred and five thousand dollars to start an endowment to keep that ferry running for the foreseeable future. So these folks have given a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the Hatton Ferry. And so all of us invited officials got to speak for two or three minutes, and uh it was just a nice little occasion, and we got to ride the ferry across. The river and back, so. Uh that was Saturday afternoons.
It's open Saturdays ten to two, y'all should do it, it's really impressive. Last one in the country?
Yeah, only one left in the United States like that.
One of our fellow town counselors used to work over there.
I met some fishermen down there too, and they uh uh didn't, they knew about our lake, but they weren't, uh had never been there. So I kind of encouraged them to go do their fishing in our lake, they all had their permits, they even had trout permits, so. What I wanted to talk about was some really disturbing news that I uh got, was told this afternoon. And normally I don't like when people say, well, I heard, well, this was not, I heard. This was firsthand information, my wife um. Had to pick up a prescription at the Rite Aid. So when she went in, she noticed the lady who was working the register, she knew her from. Uh maybe she worked down at this pharmacy at some point, but she, they knew one another by by favor, as we used to say, you know, they, and so they started a conversation. Doctor Tran, the pharmacist was there, and two other pharmacists were there filling prescriptions, so so busy. And the lady at the register was standing next to Doctor Tran, said. You would not believe how nasty people have been to us. They've come in here and spit on us. They, we have to, when we leave at the end of the day, we go out in pairs, because we're afraid to go out by ourselves. We've gotten a bunch of harassing phone calls. They blame us for this Scottsville Pharmacy closing. She said the owner of this Scottsville Pharmacy approached Rite Aid. About selling his business to Rite Aid, and he was told. We, we not really interested, he went to a higher Rite Aid official, and they bought the pharmacy business. So it wasn't for Rite Aid moving in and taking over our pharmacy, it was our pharmacy pharmacist wanted to retire, and he sold the business to Rite Aid. And we went all through this with Sherry Lambert when she got driven out of town. Because she was uh pro-development. And we can't have. Rite Aid. Think that, why, why did we make a decision to come here if these people are gonna treat us like this? And it's just very. Heart-wrenching when you tell everybody what a great little town you have, and then things like this happen. So I don't know if you might wanna stop by, see Doctor Tran, the pharmacist, just so you know. Find out if there's any, but she's phone calls, people coming in, making nasty comments, spitting at them. And they're afraid to go to their cars by themselves when they close at the end of the day.
That's obviously. That is disgusting. Right, the the folks who were hired to work at Rite Aid are.
Claire is working.
Any of those people's.
Yeah, Claire is working at Buckingham and the one at Lake Monticello, so she's still employed.
Yes. They went to Rite Aid to be purchased. But it wasn't quite as smooth as that. Rite Aid ran that big campaign saying they were coming into a pharmacy desert. That Scottsville, I mean, it read on NBC twenty-nine, it ran on, apparently there's. Drugstore dot com or something, which is a pretty big website for pharmacies. In multiple places. The head marketing guy for Rite Aid was like, oh, they're coming into Scottsville into this pharmacy desert. Which means that there there's nothing we're gonna say, you know, within a certain. Um and really made it sound like they were like the knights in shining armor coming in to save. A sporadic who, you know, had better medications because we had the pharmacy. And. I heard from one of the pharmacists that the problem and why they sold was because. When you have a certain. Report with the pharmaceutical industry. You get that report, that's the operator, but depending on how much shit that you do with pharmaceutical industry. You get, you know, a thousand pills, um you know, a max, so let's say for this amount of money. Obviously, Rite Aid. Gets it much cheaper because, you know, they're a big company, and that it's going to cost Scottsville Pharmacy. About a hundred thousand additional a year to stay open. They couldn't stay open, so they went to Rite Aid. But because Rite Aid said they were coming into a pharmaceutical desert, we had no access to a pharmacy. We're gonna come save you, and what they did is drag a small business out of. Uh if you read the articles that Rite Aid cut out.
Well, that's not the point, the point is people being nasty.
But the the people who were just hired to do a job there. Under, you know, and no fault whatsoever, and. The juice, I told pharmacy dirty, and they, they, you know, they drove a small business out of.
Claire told me, I'm not gonna get into arguing about it, but Claire told me that that was a lot of hooey. So we'll just leave it at that, but the point is, we don't need to treat people badly. That are new to the town, and that's what evidently has been going on up there.
Dress about to clarify that, put a sign out and make sure that people, I think it's just misinformation, and I think people knew. Truth of the matter, uh they might understand.
I think it's over and done with now. I did a piece on twenty-nine too, so I put my point of view out there, and it's. Hospital pharmacy not coming back, Rite Aid is here as far as we know, to stay for a while. So let's just leave it at that, let's just try to convince our fellow citizens that. They have the responsibility to put Scottsville in the best light possible and not in. Not act like a bunch of juveniles.
Yeah, I don't know how we can regulate that, but um.
Well, we went through after Sherry was driven away, we came out with a resolution saying that we were not that kind of town. So I guess everybody other than us have forgotten that resolution was passed.
We, Mr. Mayor, maybe we need to have a resolution for an abundance of kindness. I mean, some, some endorsement, I mean, I'm being. But but just, let me just go back to 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 say. I mean, I will just say this as a town counselor, speaking to the people who hear me. We all see things differently, let's be kind to each other, let's try to be kind as a town. I at times. Get opinionated, I at times say things, but let's be kind. Let's, let's try to be kind with people who see things differently, I mean, let's, let's try to be kind and accepting to people. And be a town that's known for that.
So let's move along to our kindly attorney, you got a report for us on anything?
I've been sending you a bunch of letters, if any member has any questions about any of them, give me a call, that's the easiest way. That's, I found that to be more efficient than engaging in an email conversation and. Good news, I've got to report is we, we um, it looks like the recodification is moving along, and we've got the. Final proof in in hand, and now uh. Uh Matt is 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 going through it, and I'm going through it too, it's about three hundred and seventy electronic pages. And it'll be about six hundred plus pages of printed material. And understand that all this codification is doing is dragging them to the twenty-first century. Uh our prior code, which was full of uh of uh references, which are archaic and all and all and all. It's, it's not creating anything new, so we should be in a position uh to be getting you that. Sometime in the near future, and the the very good news is, once that's done, you'll have uh you'll have a. A printed code, which will be up to date, but you'll also have an electronic version, and Matt assures me we'll have a, a search function. Which is pretty important if you've got three hundred or six hundred pages of stuff to go through. Without a search function, you're, you're really kind of stumbling around to try to find what you're looking for. So it should be a big help in the long run. Thank you again for coming up with the money to pay for this.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bowling?
Do you, with uh respect to your time, do you want to speak to the um recodification um appropriations? We're gonna, it'll be later by the time we get the budget.
Yeah, I I I'd heard, I was at one of the meetings when you talked about pulling out of capital improvements items and uh. Of the uh. Public, public uh community service, I forget the category that I'm thinking about, so I asked Matt to. Draft me what the points of contention were, so we could pull that out of this uh general appropriations resolution and. And indicate clearly that that was. Come back to the board, no legal agreement for to be made, or spending is made until the board, the council has signed all of those matters. And that's, that's what led to. My resolution that I I sent you this morning to revise. And that can be revised however the town council deems appropriate.
To to give an extra policy vote later in the year, once we figure out all the details on this.
So that makes it clear that that's exactly what's going on, at least it does to my mind.
So this is a draft, at the point you're saying, correct?
That's right, you can do it, I mean, I just do it, I, because you talked about it, I heard this before. And uh uh but if if you can add whatever you want to, or or have none of it, if that's what you decide to do.
And does this have to be approved at the same time, like the budget is approved?
This is the voting item on the budget, this, this gives us more detail, but this um. Resolution of appropriations creates the legal authority, so you'll take, you'll take two votes on um tax rate, budget and appropriations.
Okay, so they both have to be approved at the same.
Right, that's what passes the budget.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, I hadn't seen that because Bright Speed elected not to be working this morning, when I tried to check my emails. The internet function of CenturyLink that provides your email capability. They weren't so speedy.
Actually, they're no longer called Century.
Yeah, that's always that bright speed.
Yeah, okay, um town administrator, anything else to add to this point?
Counsel, this is my um final uh work session with you. Um and uh I'm working in transition to to document my daily routines, of course, helping with the recruitment. I'm, I'm trying not to start much new, uh and rather wrap up loose ends. Um so we're, we're getting there, um documenting processes, making introductions, but um. I think uh, given the variety of work that we do, I might just leave it open for questions about. Any projects that we have open, I'm happy to to share um where they stand and what their status is. I know it's important that you not lose track of anything that you've been working on.
That's great, because I, you know, there's, you're the knowledge, and the continuity is sort of gone. This, so I like to really ask some several questions about just a, you know, of update.
Yes, sir.
Versus like, what's the timeline of the car washes, is there a timeline in that, and is there any other responsibilities for the town and? In the car wash, or is it just uh whenever they finish, they finish it, so?
I I don't have a target grand opening date, all kinds of delays can happen in construction, as as you know. Um they're doing the stormwater management part now, um you may have seen the new um berm with the pond. Stormwater pond visible from Irish River. Um I, I put a conservative estimate for a grand opening in the next fiscal year. I think they will be a significant meals tax customer of ours when they open, so I felt comfortable putting a couple thousand dollars of extra meals tax in. That they, if they opened in winter, that that it, that we would see the benefits of that. As far as inspections go, um they've got a full set of building permits through Admiral County. Um we've signed off on the zoning and the site plan, compliant with our regulations. But you don't want me inspecting concrete or electrical or anything like that, the county inspectors will do that. We are welcome to keep an eye on erosion and sediment control. Because they, th- those inspectors work those projects all over the county. And when we talked about, you know, if we get a real heavy rainstorm here and you see mud going where it shouldn't, the county's got a hotline for that. So that's something where we can put extra eyes on subject, and it's, it's pretty obvious when a erosion system has failed. Um so that's something we can keep an eye out for. No, sir, it's um, it's fully approved and there's no other voting item.
I don't know what's, what's this kind of broad topic of, any maintenance issues? We have, is there a timeline on uh completion of the, the parking? The painting of the curbs, what else is he working on, and we need to know that we've been assigned, do you have a deadline on any of these things? The maintenance uh issues, I mean, I know it's concerning, the maintenance guy, he's not self-aware. What's uh, what's his, what's he doing now, has he got grass, anything?
Um yes, sir, uh stepping up in some of the transition and gap fill for me. One of the areas where I want to transfer knowledge is on um flood control and dam inspections. So Mr. Wallace has attended several um FEMA trainings for dam safety. One of the routine areas of maintenance that he works on is um clearing brush around the um the dam up at Mick Creek. And making sure that we're there with that. We do inspections ourselves uh in one year and then contract engineering on the other. So those reports always end up with the to-do list, mostly related to clearing brush and cutting down trees. Um so Mr. Wallace has done that, and I want to, I want to step up his, his knowledge related to what an effective dam looks like. And how to think ahead on that, so there's a s- a set of FEMA-related trainings that I was invited to. And it, it doesn't make sense for me to attend those and not carry that knowledge forward, so he's gone instead. That was a couple of full days, and he appreciates taking on that guy's responsibility.
Uh the uh, is there, is what about boat landing, is there much to be done with that? That it looks like they changed the whole design, and that a lot of the design of the plan. Is that, are they, they gonna do another consultation, or can we get an update from them about what's the boat landing?
I did, um I did introduce you to um Mr. Hughes and Mr. Moyer at Department of Wildlife Resources. And invited them to a future work session, um by all means, stay on that, they, they like Scottsville, and and this is a um showcase site for them. The town has finished all of its work that's budgeted on that site, and it remains under DWR's control for routine maintenance. Um Mr. Moyer, the um uh tractor operator down there, really likes this site, and I think will come down here more often to maintain it. Um so you've got the um uh parking blocks, which I've seen regularly used for picnic seating, which is the idea. Um the uh drainage seems to be working better, um and we could um continue to be in touch about um. Appropriate plantings, and you could, you could source those by donation, by budget, um or what have you, to um continue to spruce it up.
What about, the, 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 the space here, that'll take the, the space, someone were like a signage. So uh are we responsible for the signage, were they gonna do the signage, like? All along, it's been interesting to have a side saying something about Scottsville there. And also that tower, to fix the tower up, are they gonna do the tower?
It, it's um, it's an ongoing back and forth, and we've seen this both at Ben Cleef Nature Area with the lake and on the riverfront. Where DWR has many of these sites and the, the local needs on them vary. I think it's negotiable, DWR is not under contract for anything else specific right now. And and we do not have anything specific in this current budget for riverfront improvements, so that's something you could discuss with them.
And they had a wall, the wall, the wall painting of a mural, I think that'd be kind of cool.
Absolutely.
We could do that, we don't need their permission to do that.
You would want to get their permission. It's, it's their property.
Well, it puts sort of about, and with the tower too, we fix up the tower.
Yes, they, they leased the entire premises. Yes, they they leased the entire premises.
Flood markings on the tower, you know, they make it, you know, historic. Uh so we could just work with them on that. We want to do that because Stan is gonna do some of this and Danger Association and. Uh you know, they were gonna do some, we had an architecture guy. They have some things.
Just just um keep keep in touch with um Ron Hughes at DWR and ensure those objects. Yes, sir.
They they did that in July, I think, with twenty twenty-two, I thought. And that's okay. So that's almost a year. So I'd like to. Give us feedback. If he's gonna complete this plan, please. This plan is wonderful. And I know that downtown they did that, but it's not.
It'll need multiple years of um coordination, just like the long-term bank cliff improvements.
Okay, thank you. Um okay, now this is this is uh just uh. We probably know more than us. What's the uh what's the status of uh versus your normal years? Have you? Southern never made any efforts or have you said anything about doing a site plan?
They cleared preliminary site plan through planning commission.
Yeah, that was a year ago.
Yes, sir. Um they have not submitted anything about final site plan and I have um. Nothing from them about when that would be. The the last discussion that I had from them related to the rules on um. Fire hydrant spacing and the size of water lines. So that was the last engineer's question. That was a couple of months ago. This might be a bad time to break ground.
And they are right now, so they're not.
Oh, really? The 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 packing? Whoa.
Doctor didn't want to go ahead and close, because it's closed all day.
Had to get rid of all this stuff, yeah.
So I think there's that way they can't get some office between going out. They brought a big piece of equipment in and down. They go in there, knock the sign over the bush, try to get that thing up there, but we got him in there. So they're bringing track and trails and stuff and I think that's starting to move.
So there's still some interesting making an industrial park?
It's news to me.
What I'm. Well, that'd be great. Okay, um. I got a couple more questions. Uh so that contract is is pending. So there this looks like it's going in that direction. What about um the the status of the blood plane there? Is that is that everything completed? Can you get a presentation about the? They changed the blood plane there?
That draft lives with the FEMA Regional Office out of Philadelphia.
Okay.
Um FEMA is notoriously slow in approving those. It's out of our hands and there's nothing else that we need to do on it. But I don't have any guarantee about when it will be finished. When it's um when it's ratified, you will um. You'll see it on the county GIS. They'll they'll pull that map update right away. So. Um. Do this. Um. I can get over there. Um this map has. Blood plane. Thank you, Jack. You know this better than anybody.
Should be under closed zone or something, like elevation.
Not inside, motivation. Because it lives it lives with their zoning. So this will, when the map is done, this will import immediately and will change. Uh and you'll see you'll see this geography change and get a little bit smaller. Um I don't know when that's going to be, but if you if we watch this map, we'll see it when it's made official. At that point. We're maintaining those FEMA relationships. Like I said, Cody Walls was going to some of their trainings, but the um. County Emergency Manager, um John O'Prandy would also be happy to speak with us, I'm sure, about. Hey, if you live in this area, this is what you need to know.
Um and you said so the East Village, are they planning of getting that? Develop up there that's by right. Do they have they ever? Maybe you guys dream on that. They we got, they just threw that about two months ago or something.
That, yeah, that was the um the the preliminary subdivision drawings. And so similar to the Bird Street Houses. That needs to go to a final step before the lots can even be cut up. Um but it is. A couple of steps behind even where the Bird Street one is now, because right now it's not even, it's not divided into lots. So that's all very slow.
That hasn't even happened yet, like technically Dr. Hertz still owns it.
I know that, I mean, it's been approved. Both those developments have been approved, but there's never been any motion of.
And they I don't think. I don't think it's a fight contracted sign saying Dr. Hertz does not own them. Southern Development does. I don't think Southern Development does. They're in contract.
Who knows how long?
That can line up. There's it's not ending.
Well, that's nothing is unending, but it's it it's not exactly a booming economic time right now. And there are some things only rising. People are worried about if they're developing business.
Yeah, I I think there's there's time for the town to update the comprehensive plan, get a strategy set. And then enter any kind of negotiations with any of these property owners about what the. What use is in the best commuting interest. We're not going to be outrun by construction.
Okay. So so it's maybe it's like.
No, Southern is gonna is gonna do something, but it's just that they, like everybody else. They're gonna be cautious, I would suspect.
Yeah, at at six percent interest, everything's harder.
Well, it's longer than six percent.
The last one, this one, this is. What's what's the what's this? Can you talk to us about the uh the mapping plan of of ECNA? I think Kristen was involved with that and and she 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 did some work on that, but. Can you tell us, can you explain what happened there? What's happening there?
Um she gave us a price, which I I felt was a little high. Um especially with the the concern that we that we had about stretch spending. I think Lincoln Lewis is going to be well able to do that within his internship and clean up the maps that we already have. He has he has good mapping skills.
And and also, uh. How can you know about this? Uh someone she was saying that Stuart was involved. Was Stuart involved in it?
He has he has an interest in that, yes, sir. He's an interested volunteer.
Well, I mean. So he approached her, you approached her and it was several thousand dollars and she didn't work it. I mean, this is really, also to me, I I feel like we should compensate her or put her in the budget for next year to compensate her.
No, she I spoke to her directly. She said she hadn't really done any work on it. She does have the proposal. And she may have done a lot more than the proposal. She put a proposal, which is a contract together. It had a price tag of, I think, over three thousand dollars, just over three thousand dollars. And we never saw it at the council level.
No.
And we shouldn't have. You're right.
That's what I'm saying is.
We should, we should have.
We need to follow somebody's financial policies we have.
Right, it sounded um dead on, dead on arrival.
Why isn't he involved at all? I mean, why not one of us being involved and say, you get things out in the open. It's kind of like a backbone deal with us.
You had a volunteer ask, wouldn't it be nice to have a nice map? And we had a local firm who said, I can make a map for three thousand dollars. And I said. I think that's dead on arrival. We don't have three thousand dollars for maps. And that was as far as it went.
Yeah, well, her first word was she set up hours to meet us. And I think she thought it was a proposal. She submitted a contract, she told me.
Right, but until a contract's approved, then you have no agreement and therefore you have no legal obligation.
I'm not sure we we did that financially, but maybe in terms of goodwill.
Yes.
There might have been some questions there, right? So we should just be careful when we talk about these things. Outside of this context, especially with volunteers. Um what can be promised or discussed and what can that's, I think we need to be cautious.
I mean, it should have been stopped at the beginning. That's just, I mean, it's a much larger battle.
Yeah, she's clearly a leader in the community and we want to keep things in good faith with her.
Um but anyway, maybe you can continue with that if she's got the. The basics of the building, you can put it in the budget.
Oh, no.
Yeah, fish it up.
No work has been done yet. And and but this is.
I think she's got a lot of computers and that kind of thing. She's a.
One of the things, just to say this, you know, funny, my wife is the graphic designer. One thing I will tell you is in any business proposal, you do work, it takes time to make a proposal. Doing a proposal is absolutely different thing than doing the actual work.
Right.
So if proposal can take lots of time, there's one of the dilemmas you have when you in the business, if you make a proposal. That's the investment that the person who is going to make the proposal risks when they do it. They know that too. So all I'm saying to you is. In the process, in the process of whether she has promised something or whatever, I don't know. But all I will say is the proposal itself, that's just what you do. And proposals take time. It's good to take to. Somebody says, why don't you do this? And on good faith, you say, okay, I'll do this. And then they go proposal and then they're, then it's no real money. I mean.
That's but that's why, that's what.
That's not my sector of policy, you know.
Normally, what you do is.
I'd love to have her. We we got these these terrible kiosks and they really made a mistake. And there there's nothing out. And if she's got an idea. To do that, maybe just talk to her and say, give us what you want and maybe we can put it in the budget for next year. Because she sounds like she she to me, she was talking to her, she was well on the way to doing this. But maybe you could do that something different. She she it was just a proposal for ideas.
Yeah, and and to Dan's point, we don't know what was said, whether there was a sort of a verbal promise. We'll write it up and we'll get it approved for you or not. I don't know. That's a he said, she said kind of thing, which we don't have a real understanding about. But clearly, there is some misunderstanding there and if we can. Involve her and pay for her for even some time or whatnot as a good faith gesture, it would be great if we have a budget. I don't know.
Because well, and.
You know what's up with you?
I'd add many hours slides. I don't know, but she did on it. But I do know that Stuart has been going to scan and other places and say, hey. Can you guys pay for these maps?
Um, really?
He was working behind the scenes.
Stevie told me, there there's so much confusion about. So Stevie told me that Stuart went to her and asked if SCAN could pay for the maps. That um and that Stuart had made the decision, we didn't have it in our budget. And maybe SCAN can do it. So they were going to do a fundraiser and say, like, you know, let's do a fundraiser to pay for these maps. Um. But there's all sorts of weird misinformation going on. Stevie also thought that the kiosks were um. Uh. Voice scout project. Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's a twenty seven thousand dollar voice scout project. Um so I don't know. You know, like, and everything just sounded weird. So I don't know what. You know. Was actually, that they were getting ready to do it. In all honesty, my feeling on it is. To to spend, I I hate talking about it because I feel like we're reading a dead horse. I'm so sorry. To spend what we spent on the kiosk. And not spend. A tenth of that to make them workable and and usable and efficient. Seems silly. And I and I get that we don't have it in the budget. For the the fiscal year that we're finishing up. But I also noticed that, and again, this is why we're going through a lot of money line tonight. That there was zero dollars in parks, you know. Zero dollars of parks for the upcoming budget, I think, is ridiculous. And if we got some money into the parks, maybe, I I mean, because. The kiosks aren't unattractive. They aren't, you know, like, but if if it would cost a tenth of what we originally paid for them. To make them usable and and, you know, have maps of it, you know, and everything else, I think it's good. I I think it's money well spent.
Well, and I just want to interject and be clear. When I talked to Kristen, she said. Her proposal was for design work only and that the town would have to do the printing. She would, we would have to find a vendor. For printing and then we could post them up on, I think, so there would be, I don't know what that would look like price-wise.
Price-wise chain is pretty reasonable for things like, I mean, printing.
I, yeah, I don't think. But just so we all know, that would be an expensive.
What you were saying, Matt, is you thought in the skills, the the one thing, I should say this. When years ago, when we created the maps that we had for. Fred Ash was able to do a lot of the stuff that we did. He's been out of the project for a while. And having seen that. That using the different technology, this is like six or seven years ago that we did. Matt, you're kind of saying you think this is the kind of thing that Lincoln could do?
Maybe, you know, there's different levels of graphic design skill and how attractive you want it to be.
Right.
Um so I'd have, you know, if if you decide we want better parks maps. Kind of give us a give us a budget and we'll figure out, you know, the most effective way of getting that.
Part of that, if he did some, maybe they're. You could do it for a dollar, two thousand dollars.
Respectfully, sir, he's he's not my friend. He's our employee.
He's our employee, not his friend.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
But what's that? That is Dan's wife.
Oh, oh, that too, but the other guy, I can't remember.
Oh, no, I said Fred. No, who just did, who volunteered and created all the maps. We could ask him.
Well, I think, I think what we'd have to do is counsel those, decide, okay, what we want. Because one of the questions I asked is, is this just parks? Is it parks in town? Because I think we all have a different impression or expectation about what those maps would cover. And then how they would look. Are they tourist type maps? Are they, you know, heavy duty trail type maps? What what exactly are these? And I think we need to agree on that before we would commission any kind of work. Because the skills and the talents of the person doing that would be very different. I'm sorry, Meredith, where are you gonna?
Oh, I was just thinking that if if I'm correct, I think the proposal that Kristen submitted was for. Downtown end.
Yes, that was my understanding as well, and that it would be not like. Uh an in-depth, more like a tourist map. Like you see where they have certain highlights on it, where you could come in and you could probably turn it into a tri-fold or something like that.
This is, it just, it just says, it says brochure layout and design. I don't have any more detail than that.
Right. It would be good if they had any, if you had an example of something now similar or something, but.
This is all I got.
Okay.
It should go to bid, though.
It says three thousand dollars for the plate.
Anything else, Mr. Heisen?
That's the last kiosk.
There are some people go there and say, hey, something.
There's something. It's the last, has the last kiosk been installed, Matt?
No.
No, okay. We need to attend to that as well.
Well, that's another, that's always, I was trying to volunteer.
I was trying, my husband said, he go in and hang some poles with somebody. We just need a few. We need, oh, that's great, Alex. Where do we put it? Because I had asked. You two, you you're very passionate about that. Where do you have a feeling where? We can type this offline.
Levy, right through the side. Passports, for vehicles. Or at the bottom, where, you know, that kind of.
But if these are going to be maps of the town and trails, if that's sort of the intent, wouldn't matter, right? Would be covered under that design theme. But.
But yes, getting some input would be good.
Yeah, let's decide where they go. And then if Alex volunteers, my husband will come up and we can get it installed. Done.
Just be careful about drilling holes in the levy.
Just be careful about drilling holes in the levy.
We need to get the levy.
The little Dutch boy.
Yeah. All right. Three A council committee roles and assignments, Matt.
I'll refer to Mr. Heisen.
Very.
Well, uh, this. The I didn't know what I asked about that. But I have government services work very well. This we want to go through the six uh items. And uh. If they, I said it in the minutes, so yeah, the minutes of. Just the devil of the scribes committees that are inactive, uh. It moved to the ears homes, the one about the council and Congress and staff, there would be a separate finance committee. Uh, some committee of government service. So. That was a big issue. We discussed whether the a a finance committee should be part of us. Government service. Or a separate committee, so.
When you say finance, are you talking about like the over saying committees?
Yes.
I don't think that's necessary. If if what we're doing is. The what what um. Jim said about you take a second vote. From council, you know, to to approve, you know.
Yeah.
There's certain things. I I mean, I don't think we're. We're the committee. Like, I I don't think that an actual committee.
Like, I don't forget that what the finance committee does, they 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 do really well with this, that they look at this. Well, I guess you could do that as a town and say, oh, how many bids you got? What are they? But they would do that and they would uh look at the uh. You know, uh. Any any major expenditures that makes them look waste. And also, you know, kind of oversight of that. Maybe we could do that.
But I mean, I feel like that's the whole point of what Jimmy said us. So for example. Calling about.
The appropriations, are you talking about?
Yeah.
More about that, like about, but say like the kiosk. For example. So that committee would look at, okay, we have two or three, then how much should we want to spend for this? This kind of day, it's not just like a broad thing. It's it's actually about ten.
I might have misunderstood what I read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I can answer that as the phone.
I.
I mean, that's.
I was under the impression that. Moving forward, based on prior discussions. When the pattern of the spread of the data did on. Anything, you know, we were. Uh, on something that we have to bring the contract for collective agents. Say this was the lowest one, this is the end of we discovered.
Yeah, I don't think that's exactly what that said.
No.
Right? What it said is that there are. So we have various categories of appropriation, right? So we have a big number. It's eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars, right? We appropriate these funds to various buckets, if you will, right? So administrative buckets is.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventeen, right? So what? And please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bowling, but. What I understood the memo was is. There was. An interest in having greater oversights over capital expenditures for projects. That were bigger, right? So what the memo said was that for these categories of projects, Canal Basin, there were four. Four of categories. Not all, only four, right in there, specific ones that the council would get to review of. Right? So there were four specific, I don't have that memo. As part, okay, so capital improvements for Canal Basin Square Exhibits. Municipal building exterior work, that was the HVAC system. Uh, Van Cleve Nager Area and the local agency support. That's what Mr. Bowling had heard out of our meeting, and he was absolutely correct about what we heard. However, I think what Bill was after was a broader category of oversight, right?
Like say the bid, but that 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 will be the only act one there, I guess, for that, I believe. And it could have been, from my experience, it could have been cheaper. It was HVAC area for that, that could have been cheaper. So that kind of committee would look at.
And that would not be.
But that's what was in this. I mean, I feel like that's us. I I I don't think, I mean, there's six of us. Okay.
We want to do that.
But I feel like, you know, we need fifteen committees.
No, no. But it it doesn't mean that the town wants to spend time going over this as a whole.
I think, I mean. It it it's not like we're getting started at the week.
Well, I think that.
Yes.
Where this came from originally was that we want day to day town operations to run smoothly. But anything that kind of came across the table, you know, that was a bigger purchase. Yeah, we would have inside like, and so I need more, that will work. Um, government services, and if you wanted to do it something further, maybe I also needed it for the hiring. Uh, committees and have it recorded, number of people that gather and spend. Look at our stuff. And that way we're not shorting a whole committee board.
Well, and then and and Bill, if I understand you correctly, and your current thing, what you are recommending is that it not be a separate committee. But it could be as a project within the government services committee, just like the website, right?
Could be either way.
Like we've done the website.
It could be either way.
That way we wouldn't have another committee, more volunteers, more certainly.
I I personally would rather stay in here. And and like, it's it's not. Our big things that people were upset about were Canal Basin Square, the impact vote cost. The HVAC cost and the um. The 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 signs.
It is just, it is just. It's just they buy some money. That's all.
But it's not just the specific ones, right? The HVAC system is not going to get repeated. Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Dude, but we have so many subcommittees in government services already. I think that's asking your volunteers to stretch themselves even thinner than they already are. But I I think having more work load. Has runs the risk of losing committee numbers. I also think it. Takes away from the point of. Council, would you say? So if your government services subcommittee is looking at that, we still, you know, and like, I it. I feel like it's just the thing they, if a contract goes out to bid. Say we got three bids. You know. This is what each one of them brings to the table and stuff. It it it's not like these are happening ten times a week. It it it's not that long. I I think instead of making a committee, instead of making a subcommittee or whatever, we just. Bring it to the table and work session, and it's got it for forty five minutes and say, is it viable this day? Is it viable that day? And have that be that.
How do you decide what goes out for bid?
Financial policy.
You need a financial policy for that, right? Exactly.
Yeah.
So what goes out for bid? That's that's the question. It's like, I don't disagree with you, Meredith. It needs to come before council. I think Bill is saying the same thing. But I think the question here is when and what comes before council, right? And so part of the intention of the financial. Committee, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, was to adopt a financial policy that says. Anything like this, we have the charter that says everything above five hundred dollars should come to town council. And I think we've all agreed, we don't need to see everything over five hundred dollars, right? Because there's. Papier paper that may be that.
Well, I think, yeah, we we said that anything that is daily, you know, running, we're certainly gonna pay.
But we need to be very clear so that town staff understands.
Very clear, it's capital improvements and not.
Okay, then.
The jet, you know, we're not gonna set, not handles. Paycheck. We're not gonna try. Insurance. We're not gonna say no more company.
But capital improvements are also very broad too, right? So.
But I just, like I just puke it off the weekend.
It it is very long. HVAC just about this. It it it. It'll be five years, ten years before that thing again. The pack of just happens. It's gonna be five years.
Well, no, I can't, no, they don't talk about solar panels and. You know, the 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 whole idea of the government services is to to help the. So that's why I'm not taking through all the in in and outs of the many grids. Like, we had so that, like, well. You know, we we spent, we spent hours doing my website by naming the this kind of runs interference for this. So like for solar panels, we can spend. Couple hours talking to the solar panel people, and they would come here, present it to us. So. The whole idea is to do this ahead of time, so it wouldn't be so much on the town councils shoulders, just like events. We don't go all, we don't. Uh, uh, we don't take care of every event, basically, here. We have a committee that does all the events. It saves us a little work that we don't have to go through how to plan it. No, it just, the whole idea is the same. We it's it's behind the scenes things that kind of help help streamline things a little bit.
I think. But I don't know. I don't know whatever everybody wants to do. I I think it's putting too much on, I I think something like. You know, planning back to a festival, that's definitely a committee. I feel like that there are things that we can do here. What goes out today? I I I think. We don't have to get so crazy about things that we're not using common sense. Obviously. When a major repair has to be made, it goes out to bid. We don't need, we don't need a. Committee to say. We're definitely gonna hire this person without going to bid. We we know it has to go out. We we know that there could be a thousand or two thousand or three thousand dollar difference. And what somebody is gonna propose for a major repair. And you know, like, like the HVAC needed replaced, the one after bid, that's common sense. We don't need some kind of oversight saying that, you know, we need a bid on this. When. You need to buy paint to do the, to do the the uh. Parking spaces, that has to go out to bid. So you can go over to Ace Hardware and buy a paint and come back and do the the parking spaces. I think we're making it more complicated than it needs to be.
It's all about financial policy, certainly, but we don't get like five hundred dollars.
Okay, so but why do we need a committee? That's that's in the charter. Like, we know that. That's in the charter. What would the committee say about that?
The charter says, well, the charter.
Followed, but we can say we'll follow it.
I don't think the charter, we're gonna follow it. I don't think the charter said what goes to bid and what doesn't then.
Just a month.
Which says five hundred dollars, anything should be cleared by the council.
But it's common sense. What what would you say wouldn't go out? If something could possibly cost ten thousand dollars to repair. Of course, we're gonna put that out to bid. If something's gonna cost a hundred dollars to repair, of course, we're not gonna put it out to bid. Well, I couldn't do that. You know, like. And and I feel like it's common sense. Certain things get bid on and certain things. Don't, I don't, I don't think. We need a whole committee saying.
What if the, I'm sorry, but I think what the. Different than what I would say in a house, what we choose to bring before council. To get it right.
I think five hundred is reasonable. I think that's still, you gotta make anything over a thousand dollars. What's the capital? Before, you know, before a final decision is made.
Over a thousand in capital improvements?
Capital improvements. I think a thousand dollars if it's a wifi bill or salary or insurance, that does not need to be. I think those kind of bills have to get paid. And capital improvements, things like that, anything over a thousand dollars, we discuss, we, you know, we. Figure out if it's what we want to do right now, or can it wait? Is it gonna be done? Who's giving the best price? And we just got that for a little while, like.
So the appropriations. Memo, Mr. Bowling, then would be. Revised to say, instead of those four bullets, it would be revised to say. Anything above a thousand dollars in capital improvements goes before council? Is that what we're saying?
What do you want at the level of ordinance and what do you want at like financial policy? And and it even turns into staff job descriptions. This is how we buy things.
You reckon it's too difficult?
Yeah, that's just. I I I hear very.
With all due respect, I mean.
I hear clear guidance to staff, both me and the next administrator, of this is how you want your money spent, and there will be consequences if we spend money poorly. Um, that has been made abundantly clear to me.
Cause what basically, I I did to say this. From a very different perspective. What you want to do, or what what you generally want to do as we create a budget is to is to allocate resources that we want in the different. Categories. In those categories, we want to give the administrator and the town discretion on their ability to do that. That ability was questioned by certain people, not questioned by me, but questioned by certain people in the last. Spending process. We can have long debates about where we did or what we did. Moving forward, as my mom likes to say. What we want to do is create the ability to have good financial accountability. And the way to do that, or a way to do that, is make sure we are very clear in where the funnel, money is funneled, so to speak, in this budget. And then in that budget. Make sure that it's spent that way, you know? So in other words, if we put. You know, forty thousand dollars in this category or thirty thousand dollars in that category, we want to do that. What we don't want to do is micromanage. If we micromanage, then what we're doing is we're creating an enormous headache for ourselves. So so again, noted. In terms of the past. I think going forward, as we do our work on the budget itself, and we create. The places where the money's gonna go, it is our job then to make sure that we follow through with staff in good faith. To make sure the expenditures match up with that. And when we have questions about it. We review that, we we every month, we review the financial report anyway. So that's what we do. And we.
But we're. Whether we'll, you know.
Some people feel like it's gonna be for plenty of. But then you. I was gonna do. I mean, was that when the third, where is? Anyway, we should, we should have got a couple of this, but they did a good job.
Did it go for bid? Matt, did it go for bid?
It it went to kind of qualifications and proceeded on where as you as you get into it, you find more things. So. Get get a skilled team on the job. They get into it. They find more rotten wood. Um, so no.
But it didn't go to bid.
No, it would have been difficult to full job price the whole thing.
You're saying that you hired somebody to do some work. Versus you hired somebody to. Need a certain budget either, or is that not correct?
Yeah, fair to, fair to say, you know, the the job got bigger as they got into it. And with a, you know, design phase first, you can contain that.
I mean, the the one thing is to go back to Counsel Heisen in his defense. He has every right as to any town councillor to. Disagree, criticize, say whatever they may say, both for their own opinions. And because they represent the people in the town. So that's all there. So it's valid. It's a dialogue back and forth. And I think it's clear. And kind of what you're, I mean, it's clear, there's a number of people saying, we don't like what happened. We don't like that certain expenditures happen. I think what we need to make sure is that that doesn't happen. We're not, you're not gonna be here, but we need to make sure the processes. Ensure do good.
The other issue, though, we do have financial policy. We have two, uh, the charter and also this other financial. And policy that I think by one Nancy Gilmer, sir, about how money works and. I think if you follow those policies, you'd be in good shape. That's that was, that was one of the reasons why I did financial studies, said that. You got these financial policies, are they being followed? Or are they just, you know, you need a job, that's just the money, yeah, without. Following the the steps and looking at the budget.
If I if if I could, sir, I shared this in government services, and I think it's important for the whole council. I I tend to agree with Ms. Hines that these are important committee of the whole. Uh, items that all council needs to know and be aware on. So if someone stops you on the street and say, you know, why are we buying this Ford instead of a Chevy, that you all know that. And when it reaches a certain level that you all have that. My. My experience, having worked in five localities, is. Finance committees tend to create a mismatch where a couple of council members know a lot more about where the money goes than everybody else. And it's a. It's a significant power imbalance. If you, if you're comfortable with. Some some members knowing a lot more about the finances than others, okay. Um, Congress certainly does that, where the finance committee is the most powerful, because they control where the money goes. But it, I feel like it's important that you be on the same page and that you. You all get that kind of information. And if you're not getting enough detail at these monthly financial statements, then, you know, use the treasurer's report to put your treasurer more on the spot. What are we spending money on? And take as much time as you need with that. But be on the same page.
And I just propose this in an effort to. Get this cooking, um. Yeah, let's. Let's amend this. And sit down. let's amend this and sit down with, for all of us personally, if you have an issue with it, sit down with it, make sure it says what you want, master the budget. Make sure, you know, the spending that we want to monitor is on that. And if Government Services wants to add an agenda item weekly, we'll have a sit down with town staff and have those items presented on enter your presentation council. We can, next year, no, no, okay, as a policy for the future. So we have that aspect as far as policy and-
I'm just not clear on that.
Think Government Services can take, instead of, sorry, some committee, just have this agenda item, if there's something that comes up.
If there's an issue, take it up as an issue and then present it to council, is that the, yeah, I think there's still-
Maybe more like, maybe a lot of folks, what the, have a set of media to look at each style, going the way.
Yeah, I think there's still a question in my mind of getting visibility into the spend before it happens, I'm not clear how we do that. Last time it was said, well, who gave the authority to do this? And the authority was in this memo, or it said, you gave the authority when you sent out this memo and we did the appropriations. Fair enough, but there were policies that were supposed to be in place that people thought were in place and they didn't get followed, how do we guarantee that? So, in my mind, there's still that open question.
Well, one thing you can do is go and, you know, you're exempt from having to comply with the procurement act, but most anybody, everybody over thirty-five hundred souls has to comply with it, it's a nice little single spaced, um, forty-five, fifty-page, uh, act in the general assembly and, uh, that's got for you, and it regulates how you procure everything. Now, the rub of that is that when you, when you, everything over X dollar amount has to go out to bid.
Yeah.
And, and then it's to the lowest responsible bidder, there isn't any, you know, basically. Well, I know, I mean, that's, you do not wanna do that unless you haven't really thought about it, because then it, you have a lot more flexibility.
Right.
Freedom to do what you think is in the best interest of town council and the town of Scottsville by not having to comply with the procurement act.
But that's, that's the crux of the issue. It's the freedom of doing what's right for the town versus getting insight into spend, right? That's what the, is being weighed.
And, and Alex said exactly what you have to do, you have, he said a key word, you have to, you have to look at the appropriations with the budget in hand, because the budget is the, you know, the appro, this is just the, this is the big guy, big index, and then the budget is the little index, and you have to match them up. And then decide what you wanna come back to you and what is, is fine to let the, let the town administration, uh, expend on, uh, whatever that is. But you just identify them in, in your appropriations resolution, and it's not a complex matter, you can, if you want to, you can say, we wanna, we wanna make a decision on everything in the budget. I mean, that's, well, that's crazy, but you can do that, or you can say, we wanna do fifteen items or ten items, just but you'd need to decide for yourself how to do it, and I think really you're fine that there's not that many historically, there's not that many items that are from the town that are really going out to bid of any great size, and when they do, then everybody should know about it, and that's-
That's a problem, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I don't, it hasn't been a problem really in the past, and it's just a matter of identifying what you want to come back to you and give your, give the final say on versus what you don't wanna have that done, okay?
Well, that's what we're trying to do, but how do we do that?
Well, I just, Alex just said how you do it, you, you sit down with the budget, I mean, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Alex.
If we're gonna do that, so there's a lot of stuff I would say that-
Well, that's why we're also going to go over it by my-
Yeah, and, and, you know, I mean, I, things that have been found. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm confused.
We'll put those on, yeah, the things that will come to us, but everything else will be described.
And with all due respect, the, but there is nothing in the charter which talks about five hundred dollars, I mean, that's- Well, no, I'm looking for it, I, I can't find it.
Not choice.
Huh? It's, it's not in the chart. Mr. Heisen? No, it, it's not in the charter and I just looked on in the code of Virginia, but it couldn't be. That's the one I looked at.
This is, this is, this is important, this is appropriations authority.
Yeah, where, where, but, but, but how many it just says that it's in your rules or procedure and then it's in your, what's the other one?
It's the, uh, financial policy.
And your, and it's your financial guidelines, where your five hundred dollar figure comes from.
Okay, but that should be considered policy, correct?
Well, yes, it's your policy, but it's not your charter, and I guess I'm gonna be legalistic on you, but the charter's like the, the, uh, the constitution, the, you know, the, the, that's the basic premise of, of your, of your existence, and that's dictated by the general assembly. If you wanna change the charter, you have to go back to the general assembly and amend it, and that's a big deal.
Okay, so, but we do have rules stating five hundred, is that easy to fix, like they five hundred?
No, it says all questions, it, it's in your, something called the rules of procedure, I have it right, is that right? It says all voting, all questions submitted to council for the decision shall be presented by appropriate motion, dot, 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 except in case of any matters involving the appropriation of any sum exceeding five hundred dollars. A majority, but, but sir, when you pass that appropriations resolution each year, which is tied to the budget, you, you have been authorizing the expenditure.
Appropriations, right, all these just read like, there we go.
It does, it's a mini, I mean, it's, it's used in every town and county in Virginia.
Okay, I'm not saying to you it reads like-
I know.
I'm just saying to me-
I, then I'm saying, so, so then, then if you wanna have certain items pulled out, identify what they are, pull them out and have them come back before you.
That's, that's the fixing promise.
Yes, so I think the, they would bring the spins to us before the, the gets-
Only in those-
I'm saying is that the rules, procedures, etc., I agree, which I think is ridiculous. If we wanna come to a place that's, that this is how we're going to do it, we've gotta have a certain policy in effect. My question was, I understand changing the charter is hard.
Yeah, but, but five hundred is not necessarily, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but let me say, five hundred may not, may or may not be unreasonable. But that's for things that have not been appropriated, you follow me?
The, the definition is important.
Yeah, see-
Appropriation creates the spending authority. Once we get the appropriation off to the races and we don't check back in before we spend the money. Appropriation is different from spending. So, so right now, um, Mr. Eisen, you're making one appropriation vote for the whole year, and then we take eight hundred thousand dollars and we spend it. And it's clear, like, that's, that's not good. So what, what this, what this work with Mr. Bowling's shows is additional appropriations that we're saying, you're working on this, but you're not appropriating the canals and work. So it would be illegal for us to buy canal based exhibits.
Yeah, I gotta jump in, yeah, I gotta get this conversation.
All right. This, this is anticipated budget, subject to appropriations. So instead of just having, like we have in the past, one appropriations vote that covers the whole year, now we're gonna have a potash.
I see.
And I, and I will pay the electric bill, do, I won't, we'll, we'll pay the electric bill, we'll run payroll, all that. But, or we'll spend a dollar on local agency support, we're gonna check back in with you and get another appropriation and not spend until we do that.
And, and they don't have any, that, these categories don't have any magic, it's just that I, that's what I, me, I heard you all say at, at a work session. So I put them there, I mean, but, but it's not, you're not bound by them, it's up to you what to put.
Instead of breaking it down, just say capital improvement.
Well, you could, but be careful, because there are some capital improvement items which are very small and then you're-
You, you might, and, but-
If you put a number there at the end, or anything over-
Yeah, and then you, to get your number, you have to go to the budget document itself, and if you, and that's identified in the first page of the appropriation resolution where it's called the items.
And you, you could try it for all capital, I'm trying to imagine like when, when a capital vote could be trivial, but like, um, handguns for the police. Not super, they do last for a long time, so they're, you call them capital, and, and maybe council does have a strong opinion about what kind of gun we buy, you know, so.
I don't think we wanna micromanage that, that's the danger, right?
So, I think the structure is there, what I'm saying.
Speaking of this with you now, I'm just saying that, yeah, I do like that, that does make sense, they are towards things that we have had arguments about.
Yeah, I think this, this-
Kind of why I'm saying we'll sit down and vote before we vote on this, and if there's anything that's not summed up, like those, or by just generally saying capital improvements that you wanna see on it, that we will have a sentence in the future, then you throw it on, uh, uh.
So if we appropriate in these buckets, these expenditure buckets, are those four categories outside of these buckets or within these buckets?
Well, but, but this is your entire budget, and you have to go to identify section one, general fund expenditures, look, look on the page, and it says, item two and item three are your subcategories in your budget, and to make sense of that, you have to go to your budget Excel, which I don't have the whole thing before me, but that's-
Oh, you don't, you know, you, you tell me.
And then it says for those particular items, um, you want four of them pulled out
Yeah.
and come back to you before anything is done to bind, so it's their budget.
In the appropriate.
But, but they haven't been appropriated because it says notwithstanding the foregoing, these matters shall come back before, before they are spent or before the administration legally obligates you to pay for it, okay?
We, an, an example of like a capital item that would go ahead without check back in, we have two thousand dollars for street signs. So if one of our nice brown signs gets broken or vandalized or something, we'll go ahead and replace it and we won't bring that to a vote. Um, and those last a long time, and they can be pricey, but we're just gonna go ahead and do that, because it's not one of those, but it is capital.
But if you wanted to be one of those, then we can easily put that in, in this category, yeah.
I think we make that decision after we go line by line, and that's-
Hello, Matthew?
Okay, are we at a point where we can move on?
Yeah.
Take, take, take five minutes. Yeah, five hundred, that's-
Yeah, if we make it five.
I'll make it five.
All right.
Starting now, okay.
I just, I'm tired.
For a minute. It's all right. Everybody needs to stretch a little bit.
Want some water?
Sure, where do you find your water?
I got some.
So you, oh, great. You get your mail at your house, do you?
No, at the post office.
Yeah.
But they'll, they know which post office box, P O box sixty-seven, but they'll, uh, I don't wanna get to my house. And I know each other very well.
Oh, sir. Call Matthew Holt.
Calling Matthew Holt.
Well, I feel bad about the, uh, the events that have been taken over at the right.
What are you doing?
Hard to breathe, people were-
What do I say?
Act that way.
Yep. Your, your part gonna be very long.
Two minutes.
All right.
Yeah, Matt put it on me, and I didn't know.
Well, I can say-
I mean, it's appropriate that people know what's going on. Yes, to me, sure. I mean, we, yes, we, the- And did not get still. I need to talk, I need to have this down.
Where'd you have it all of this?
After the parade. That, that, that's my, you know, it's just doing what that type of number, you know, first one or about, I call it a team. I don't know.
One thing, as a bowling, I would tell you that-
I, I, as an example, that I found. It's normal.
Talking about parking.
Matt?
And the one thing I will say, humanity, God, we've got something boring to talk about again, because because normally, what I tell my friends over the years of being in town council, if you listen to us, if you don't follow us, if you're middle and now for the last year, the heads that has been doing that, because we've had so a lot of attention, but we had that conversation a few weeks ago, but thank you.
You know what, I can't talk.
See, you haven't seen anything, yeah.
Thinking more like-
I haven't seen your major economic-
But that's what I think should go, yeah, something like this. Yeah, and that's why Kristen was gonna do this type, because it is harder, and that's why I had the big price talk. But she had to take what you have, and sort of put them at record and turn it into something that-
We've got some fragile-
Outsider could read, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, that's just national, international economic.
Right, so you have to have the street put on the, um, like-
Well, this is funny, I'll tell you this in a funny, funny way, so, my dad worked this- Um, so, when I watch every day, you see, you see, so when the dad was there- So you're watching it like, well, my mobiles, my Xbox mobiles, clearly it's not what I have. But it's much better at the moment, in the uncertainty of the world.
Something like that, if you could, if you could start with that as a base, not-
Absolutely.
They could say that, you could start with that as a base, and then-
It, it goes, this is one of-
Only thing I know is that I can, I perfected body, I'm a fellow. It's, it's, what's gonna change?
Well, that's not a business you wanna get into.
It doesn't, and you know, I, I don't have a, what is it, I don't have a dog in-
I don't have a dog in this fight.
Same page, right, so.
Well, I have to pipe up when you can't, you can change your policy, but they're easier to change, they're, they're easier to change in the ordinance, change your ordinance, you have enough, your cones have gotta advertise.
And the children are even harder than-
Charters are very, because they don't like the mess.
Hybrid.
Yeah, and then you can change your policy pretty easily.
It's a matter of, like, just solving our problem, that's really all it is, and last year-
You have to look at it, you're, you're not restricted by policy, it's just a good appropriation.
Uh, so my client-
That must shouldn't be in the home system. It's gonna cost six hundred dollars a bucket.
We had a car that had been dead for a couple of days, so I, for example, yes.
I have one of those, that's, I don't know, tires. About twenty-five, we'll sort of race, so I know where the, up in rural, so we're gonna do that.
And that's where, that, you're, that's about the, it's about, yeah. But life, we-
Oh, yeah.
Learn with the newspaper, that's really how you learn about cars.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of-
Thank you. To be sad about it, right?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Same, we had, I think, but they had, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, and, you know, like, before, although it's a big cap, or, it's, it involves, makes the distinction. As you have, which is what I, I, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I just see right there where it says, um, administrative office, administration in office, there's two thousand-
What's the best deal?
I actually think it's gonna be a hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seven.
I don't get high school story on that one.
Well, the other point I think where it says, capital improvements, it should actually be a hundred and eight thousand.
That could be in my junk.
Can I do that for each one?
About a few lines of your home tonight, stay a little, play out.
I walked two miles, sorry. Um, so, actually, I was thinking it was partnership of two thousand, seven hundred, three hundred, yeah. That's when I talked to the guy, I was, if you heard this joke before, like, so there was a young man, and I tell you about the guy working at the natural, I'm just telling you that, so, so there's a young man working at the natural history museum. Been working there, it's just not that long. Somebody came in and said, it's very, Ron and Curtis Rex over there, how old? He said it's three hundred and twenty years, and three hundred and one, and- Three hundred and one year for one or three years. Three hundred and one year for one or three years. How do you know it's three hundred? Well, I started working here a year ago.
What can I get at?
So, that's what I'm saying, we didn't like change.
Let's get back to work.
That's nice, you know my.
Okay, item three B, goals and strategies, council member Morse is gonna address this topic.
Okay, well, I just wanted to let everybody know, we work with the planning commission and the town council jointly. We took each one of the six, uh, objectives, the priorities that you all have identified, sound government practices, fostering smart growth. You'll see that on slide eleven. Um, we're taking them and breaking them down into actionable goals with measures. We've decided to break into smaller teams because people don't have the appetite, the time for. Whatnot to be involved, so we have some, as the unsaid members from the planning commission, I'm trying to reach out to some community leaders. To get involved and we will come back to you when we have some. Quantifiable data, if you look under like the first one. Let's see. Promote sound government practices, there are four proposed. Goals to improve information availability, improve financial oversight, clarify role and responsibilities. And improve overall communications, those are the what. The hows are the strategies and then we're putting measures. So we would like to draft these and prioritize, I'd like no more than four goals in each of these objectives. So that we can actually track work to be done. In a joint manner, uh, with. Community, government and, um. Volunteers, does that make sense? But we were at, as Mr. Mr. Mayor mentioned, we were at the Hatton Ferry and I think. One of the speakers mentioned that the ferry was a good example of how government. Volunteers and nonprofits came together to actually get something done. After the same type of results with something like this. So does anybody have any questions? Or concerns as we're moving forward? These all came from the town council and planning commission, I did not make these up. So, um, I just put them here as placeholders, they will come together, a smaller committee, look through them, prioritize, and then I will bring them back to this. Uh, council for final approval.
Thank you for spearheading the effort and thank you for getting the input of the planning commission.
You're welcome, and then, uh, the other thing, just as a corollary, I am starting to try to pursue some smaller grants. That would align with these strategic priorities, I think we have, I've identified four or five main categories. In terms of public safety, accessibility, main street, uh, revitalization, historic preservation, and I think there's one other category. That I think we're trying to look into, um. Getting smaller grants for. Okay.
So, I mean.
Now, four each would be a lot.
Next year.
Yeah.
Like five, maybe next year or whatever.
Well, each category will have four objectives and then I think we'll have to decide, not all will be done by council. But they will be projects, it could be staffed by volunteers or, like we had talked about, uh, plantings in town.
Yes.
We have a beautification committee that'll do that, right? Um, I thought. Well, I know it's not a committee, but there's still an effort going on. I, I thought Mariana was, I thought Mariana was doing some work in there. Okay, so it's volunteers, right? This is where volunteers would, we would put on there, volunteers would be responsible for that. Okay, so it's not all town councils. I just wanna make that clear. But town council should be aware of everything that's going. Okay.
Thank you so much, um. Three C, you wanna start this one off, Matt?
Um, okay. Uh, we had our required public hearing. Um, without a whole lot of input, so looking forward to the budget adoption deadline, we, you know, we don't have a lot of survey data or testimony on this. And it does rely on council's leadership about what the priorities are and, uh, how you feel we should, we should best spend our money. Um, as, uh, discussed previously, the advertised budget sets a maximum set of tax rates and a maximum spend. But doesn't lock you into anything other than that. So you have on the larger of these two spreadsheets, the eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to work with. This has been through a, a bit of a journey since January, which was when I was first presenting some of the economic trends and first impressions with you. I tried to give a, just a refresh on that path. This was the work session document that I was updating for you over several months, so it, it just goes back in time from. My January first draft, which showed this, um, looming revenue shortfall and then the way that we closed that. Well, with a combination of spending reductions and the meal tax increase. So that puts us in, um, a balanced position for this evening. Um, but you still have opportunities to discuss about shifting, responding to some, some line item detail. Like what Chief Jenkins described, where he can tweak a couple of things to make the police department work better here. Um, and then your, your big policy discussion is go, no go on DMV. Um, so I'm, uh, between us with the staff here, we can answer any line item question about why is this item the number that it is? And I've got the spreadsheets up here ready, so. As, as, as much as you'd like to, we can talk through these details and, and adjust. Working off of either of these versions to get you to a, um, a budget that's ready to vote next week.
Do you guys wanna start with DMV?
Yeah, that's a big one.
Okay, um. Uh, soon, if we do close it, I mean, I think. Something we're gonna have to do, and I don't know, even if it's. Is our plan to close it down and it's still in the budget, is there an issue with that? We know we can. Not doing, or we can take it out of the budget, that would be a bad, that's correct.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So, the only thing I'm worried about, as we do decide to close it, is there a July first? Kind of spend that's gonna automatically go out with that? And if there is, we should address it.
But I feel like we can really allocate that if we decide to.
My point is that. If there's something on July first, it goes, all right, this check goes out with the lot first and you have to post it down there.
Right.
We need to talk about that.
That's it.
Before.
I understand.
Yeah.
Renewal, right, contract renewal happens.
Let me, let me say one or two things, obviously I would like to see DMV states. I had a chat, nice long chat last week with, um, I don't have his last name, his first name is Barry, he works for DMV in Richmond. He is overseer of DMV selects. And relating to something Meredith said. If you go online to DMV and you go to the Scottsville link to do your business, Scottsville gets the revenue. A lot of people didn't know that. We need to. The gist of the conversation was we need to revamp our marketing of our DMV. And there's different ways you can do that. By contacting any local car dealers, I guess skiing does his business down here, does he? Yeah, we get some people on the south side of, uh, Charlottesville instead of going fighting the people at Pantop's, have them come down here. You know, market it better, we haven't been marketing it better and make sure people know that they can do it online, but they have to, if they go to the. Scottsville DMV site, on the big DMV site. We get the business.
So you can do a transaction on the big, right? Or then you can choose Scottsville and do that same transaction. In one case, we get the money, in one case, we.
When you did yours with big DMV, you know, we didn't get anything out of it because neither one of us knew that you could go to the Scottsville link. And do it and we would get the revenue from that, but we need to publicize things like.
How do you find the Scottsville's link?
I think that was like the issue.
When you, when you go onto our page.
Yeah.
Just gonna show you what we got. And you go onto Scottsville, that'll work. There were things I didn't know, I was gonna be doing this. But I had to pull that part in.
Well, let me, we're gonna do that one of the issues, one of the issues, a lot of stuff in general, I mean, you know, the people in our community. A lot of them, I've seen the people, they're, they're not online people, you know, we have elderly people, rural people and they're not. They're not real savvy with internet.
Or they don't have good internet.
And there's not a lot of services you do, um, if you can't get the real ID, you know, that.
You can't get that.
Definitely, so I, 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 I. My feeling is, I mean, I think it's got like all of them, sort of value lost.
And the, the, you're taking somebody at the library. Who's, like, the job is going to be helping people getting things done on line. Whether that be taxes, whether that be DMV, whether that be anything, there's gonna be a, a new employee at. Our library, whose sole job it is. To help what will probably be most places here is. Navigate with people without, um. Internet access, whatever, navigate these things and do these things.
I think you'd be hard pressed to find anyone that doesn't think it's a good service to offer. Or who doesn't enjoy the community, so I think it's a budgetary, that would stick. We have it in the budget, the other point is. We have all the gears, we have all the equipment and we. Essentially, from talking to you now, we have the ability to restart this. At a point without. Refacing the initial cost that we had to start at this time.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
So we could. Mothball it.
Yeah, 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 and I think that. Might be there to do this.
So, so maybe it's, should we just take a round robin of who wants to keep it and who doesn't?
Yeah.
Let's do that because then we can just put this to rest. Mr. Mayor, you've said you want to keep it.
I just think it's, even though. We've only been doing it. Almost two years. And any startup business is not gonna make a profit in the first two years. We can go one more year and see what happens and then decide whether we wanna keep it or not. It does a lot of. People in this area a great convenience to not have to go to Charlottesville. And certainly they've closed one in, in the DMV in Dillon, so they don't have anywhere over there to go. It's just sometimes, you know, you, you, um. Even if you're not making a profit, you're providing a good service for your citizens.
Hello, Matt, am I on here?
Dan, do you have hard yes, hard no, or are you on the fence?
I'm. I'm on the fence, but I'm on the fence. Not because. I mean, I think it's a good service, I just don't know how we can pay, how we pay for it, so anyways, at the moment, I'm on the fence.
Okay, and, and just, just for clarity, I talked to Matt earlier. When we raised the meals tax, correct Matt, to six and a half percent, that covered most of the. Loss from the DMV, is that correct?
Yes, that's what, that's how we went from a deficit position in what I showed you in January to a balance now. The, the numbers on DMV didn't change across those versions.
But there are some other trade offs in here too, but having said that, okay, that's. Bill, yes, no, or on the fence?
Well, I mean. And I'll show this off, great, it's nice to have a public service. But I don't think we're in the business of one public service, then we'll probably be in the same place next year. I don't think we can market it more, we can work this, uh, you know, you gotta have a new time administrator, try to. Take this on as well as many other things, I think it's just overwhelming for, for us to do, there's other, other services we have. Maybe we can support, you know, the police inquiry level. I just think this is a state service.
Okay, so you're a no. Okay, Alan?
I, I'm gonna, you know, I think that if it's a service that we wanna offer in the library, it's gonna, we could. Do something similar, I have a part-time employee to help people and especially have a computer, but that's one from the town, that just does a couple hours of media, advertised time. That could accomplish the same thing for a month and a plus cost, and help people navigate computers and others. But also, I do.
You understand, I mean.
If we do a listening meeting, I mean.
I would, I would volunteer, I mean, I would volunteer. Four hours.
And if you like that, I think we could.
We could say Tuesday noon to four, if you want help. You know.
Yeah.
Registering your car online or whatever, that's a good point.
So a yes, maybe, no, no, Meredith?
No.
No, okay, three noes, I think Eddie would be a no. Right?
She's been very quiet.
Hello.
Eddie, are you a yes, no, or maybe, did you hear the conversation?
Yeah, I, and I did, and you know. I, I concur with the mayor that it's, it's a good service. And. Yes, I was in favor of it, I voted for it. However, it's not making money. Um. And we can't afford to subsidize. You know. This, this operation right now, if we could put it on hold, mothball it like Matt said. That would be good. Um, you know, just pull the curtain down, wait for better times, I don't think they're coming, I don't think we can afford it. Uh, they're China employees, the state doesn't help us, we get, you know. The, the, the business they pay us, so I, I'm a, I'm a definite no.
Okay, and I would say for myself, unfortunately, I would have to say no, not because I, I mean, I, like Eddie, I agree with the mayor that this is a great service. My biggest thing is I'm looking at the economic conditions for next year. And I'm thinking that things are not looking good and we may need a pool of. Even some reserves to have in there in case we need to adjust things or revenue doesn't come in as exactly projected. So that's my fear.
And, you know. Five years down the road. When Bird Street is built out. And Blenheim is built out and then other development, you know. It could be, it could be a whole different conversation, you know what I mean, we may absolutely have. Population to.
But it sounds like for now we would take it out of the budget.
So my next question would then be.
Just one, can I say one quick thing before you do, all I wanna say is, I do think it was. Good that we tried it, I'm thankful that we did it, if, I think whenever, if we do come out of mothballs, it's gonna be doubly hard at that point because. We had the resources from an unusual source that we won't have in the future.
Okay, until that's so, I mean, all the stuff that we, that we won't have.
Well, that'll also get dated, it depends how long you. No, I'm not saying it's not, I'm, I'm simply saying that this, the money we had from the American Rescue Plan, that's not gonna happen. So that was an unusual source, but.
My. My feeling on it is. DMV, that like. Don't work. The only thing I have. To back that up. Is that they all shut down.
No, I think we know that the, that are profitable, go down.
You, with a, a huge population or whatever, but when, when you. Look at all of these little DMV selects where you can't get a driver's license, you can't, you know what I mean? And, and all of the services that are offered in the DMV selects can be done online. And they don't offer any other services that can't be done online. I, I think that, you know, as you said, real DMV, you know, people. Have a driver's test and all that, I think it's very.
No, and I'll, so, all I was gonna say again is, so as a town council, we did in good faith have the DMV, we thought it, we, we gave it a try, there was a resource, we had to. Give the funding for it, we lament the fact that it's gonna put people out of work, at the same time. We can only do what we can do as a town council and it's. We recognize if we. Close it, I don't know how we would reopen it, it's, it's money.
Everything else, you should have a business plan, we should have every month that are leaving. They have the area going, we have, everything like all the way, it's service.
But the trends that we saw when we looked at it in government services, with the smaller ones, the rural areas, did not do well. And if that trend hadn't. Gone up in time. It typically never did, and that's why Dillon shut down. it typically never did. And that's why Dillon shut down.
So my question is, and I guess we'll go through these maybe together by my line, um, the the nearly thirty thousand dollar increase.
Well, who's that?
Was that strictly for the annual road production for the reserve? Why did we? Why did we take thirty thousand?
Well, I just do the town library, but some of it would have, I think, depending on that, they have a telephone, that that's what it is. The thing that I put in there, basically, I definitely should have some more like remarks, um, in the government, the police, having money for the police, so that they want to do that, but was.
I was just thinking about now that we've kind of come to the decision, the DMV select, why not just reallocate that to be eight thousand?
It's thirty two thousand.
Where?
Or.
It was making some money. So when you when you turn off the DMV, you also lose.
Oh, you lose, that's where that's where it is. Thank you.
It's the difference of the fifty eight and twenty six. Thirty two hundred.
Thirty two thousand.
But if you allocate all that, you lose some of that reserve that you could. I mean, we can reallocate things. You know, we if we've appropriated them, right? If they've been appropriated.
I think it's your focus, it's why I said we're all about that, I don't have choosing to not have the money.
Yeah, I don't think we should allocate that all lightly is my point. They if we look at this memo, this is what the uh government services did. They recommended, and this would have resulted in a uh, well, this one would have resulted in a budget, flat budget, right, though? The three percent pay raises instead of six for the police. We I think we should go back to three instead of two. I think the current budget, uh, eh, the current budget allows for a two percent. We had recommended three percent. Um, government services.
You had multiple meetings.
We had multiple meetings. The first one was three, the this memo indicated three percent that went out. Right?
I mean, two percent increase doesn't cover the cost of how much food has gone on. I mean, I can't afford.
Probably neither does three, but the place where it's important, if I understood Chief Jenkins correctly, was in the pensions, and I think we have, you know, I think it's just good to do what we can for our public safety staff in whatever capacity. That's just my personal feeling. So some of that funding could go back to the original three percent proposed.
I have a question. I know you're talking about having a surplus. I thought a budget had to be balanced. I thought we couldn't have a.
You you can, you can have a net to reserves either way. So it's not like um, I say, the money's there, but if you were having a like a a big spending, you know, you had to do something really important and you drew down from reserves, you can show revenue from reserves. So you spend more than what your taxes brought in, but you used reserves, and that's okay. This year, building in a cushion, you're not spending everything that you made, and you know that you're socking away four thousand dollars for a rainy day. That's okay. Having a net to reserves is still spending. So this is this is balanced, but it's showing um that bottom line growth or reduction in the reserve fund is gonna make up the difference.
And we talked about allocating money for Boys and Girls Club and things like that. Those reserves, if we have them, can be used for those types of things at the end of the year. If we if the economic conditions are great, all the revenues come in as expect as expected, we can use those reserves and spend them at the end of the year for those types of things.
All right, so how do you want to say that number, taking as a fifty eight thousand forty eight, you said it gives thirty two?
Yeah, so on the on the regular one, if you take the revenue that is on the second page, which is DMV select service fees, so you have twenty six thousand.
Which one is which is regular?
Oh, sorry, the uh public hearing version. Yeah, that's highlighted. So you got thirty two thousand and forty eight dollars to work with.
Thirty two thousand.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking if we go line by line, what's your vote would be?
Sure.
You know, go either at eight quarter, eighty forty one, thirty two, or?
Yeah.
Eight one.
Yeah. Well, it would be forty one, but just looking to reallocate thirty two thousand forty eight dollars.
Right, so some of that money could be put back. You had noticed some zero in terms of power, the things that can't get allocated back.
That's why I wanted to just like go literally line by line.
Good.
And like where we have zero dollars, where and and I know it was put back, but like when the police brought money for for July, I think like, I don't want to approve a budget. And then six months from now, I'll be like, oh, well, you're a question that you have money for such and such. I don't know, you know, we want to see that we're lining every page.
Listen, we're all, Mr. Mr. Bowling, uh, you can read those. We make budgets surplus, a category under the uh the memo you sent out, and so after.
Re-thirty, you mean, reset.
Yeah, so then we can sit down with that surplus again and go in and move around without being a few or.
No, and in and in addition, you you when you appropriate a budget during the course of the year, get updates about how your budget projections are going, and if you see you made a mistake, that's your underpl- that's the thing, that instead of getting ten thousand dollars for this item, you're only getting one thousand dollars, you can say, whoa, wait a minute. We've got to cut spending back, so let's go in and cancel the phone service or whatever, you know, exaggerate, but whatever you need to do to make up the nine thousand dollars. So that so you're not restricted once you adopt this appropriations resolution. That doesn't lock you in stone for what you spent. You can make a change based upon uh uh actual circumstances as the appro- as the money comes in, as the revenues come in, which you're always forecasting.
Right.
Keep the tab on. So that you've got enough money to cover what's what your expenses are gonna be. If you say you're out, you're gonna be short, then you gotta do something.
We we did that at the beginning of COVID, when restaurants closed and our revenue was in prefall. We canceled capital projects and furloughed staff and tightened it down until we started getting federal help.
I just don't understand about it.
Okay.
I would really appreciate everybody's patience or thing and saying, I really want to say, okay, accounting services.
Yep.
Recommended, you know, like just where we have zero dollars. You know, where just going no before I vote yes or no on budget.
Would would it help to?
Understand a little bit.
Would it help to call attention to lines where there's a market change from year to year?
Yes.
Okay, um, one big one.
Are we looking at the public hearing version?
Uh, hyphen number three, that's the more the more substantial, mostly those. Um, your um, so a administration down at cigarette tax expenses. Those are the physical stamps that go on cigarette packs to show that the the tax is paid. And the vendors buy those in advance on big rolls. They're pretty expensive, but we we order a hundred thousand of them at a time, so we keep. Last year, we had to buy a whole bunch of those stamps, fourteen thousand dollars. We knew that was coming. It was on budget. We priced it. We knew how much it would cost. Now we're good. You're not gonna do that again next year and probably not the year after.
So we have enough stamps to cover.
Yeah, they're in a huge box.
This next fiscal year.
For several years. So that's why that's zero, because we know we're not gonna buy more stamps.
Oh.
One-time expense.
Okay.
Um, our computer situation, I I drafted this before I knew I was leaving. This laptop is falling apart. You should probably buy the new administrator a new computer.
Okay, so.
Oh, it's the one.
They're put.
What what do you think that might be? Too much?
More than that, probably.
My gosh.
With software and everything else?
Um, the licenses will carry over. We're already paying for the licenses. It's just hardware. Um.
Three thousand?
That'd be an awfully nice desktop. Um, this was less than a thousand.
Really?
Yeah. It's not a fancy computer.
Ain't too much there.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
So and how old was it?
I got this when I started. It's five years old.
So now, well, we'd say two thousand, maybe. I don't know. I don't know how to place a kind of a top.
Probably fifteen hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen thirty.
Yes, it'd be a solid.
Okay, that's.
Now we have fifteen hundred here that we would have to find.
All right, so are we changing this line in real time now? So we can see how the numbers change, or it wasn't?
I'll just do this here.
The fifteen, are you gonna put twelve? Put fifteen to be, okay, okay.
I think we can push on this audit. This is a recommended cost increase from the auditor. This this year's audit is quite late. I'm pretty unhappy with them. I I think we could stick to the same price.
Bring it, bring it the same or?
Keep it at eighty five.
It's been eighty five?
Yeah.
Should we budget at nine just in case?
Yeah, looks better than eighty five.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so says Mr. Bowling.
I I'm just guessing, but I think it's got a reason to it.
All right, let's bring that back to eighty five then.
You you got the you got the insurance quote already, right?
No, no, no.
So that's that's this price of the computer.
Remember?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. That's. Um, how did we?
When crashes.
It happened anytime, you know. It's just proper accounting between.
But that's why you have reserve.
Check again.
I guess.
Between some of it between police. Yeah, cuz the that police is this long.
All right.
Split between vehicle. Yeah, this um insurance line goes goes down only because of a shift in accounting.
The thirteen thousand?
Yeah, we the um, we wanna we wanna bill the police vehicles insurance within the police department instead of making it look like all of our insurance is an administrative expense. So for this one, we just shifted that insurance cost over.
But it's a net zero.
It's not actually saving us anything, but it it looks.
Changing the number.
Yeah, it looks like five thousand in admin, but you'll see it over in police as well.
So you'll shift the uh some of that or all of that to the police budget?
Um, no, no, that thirteen's correct. Yeah, that is a lower number.
In the administrative?
Yes.
So that's for the rest of our.
And then the difference is now on lease, cuz.
Okay, gotcha.
Police vehicles.
All right.
The um, the job ad that we have open now has the town administrator at a lower salary than what I'm making now um in attempt to save money.
Right.
So there's four thousand dollars saved there.
And which? Oh, town administrator base salary. Okay, gotcha.
Um, Mr. Bowling's compensation goes up. This is restoring his pre-pandemic level of pay. He took a pay cut at the beginning of COVID and requests that that back.
Town attorney.
In my own defense, I'll say I've never had a raise. I'm here a while. That's that's true. That's on purpose, dude, a lot, a lot of it.
Um.
Okay, so that's the end of administration, right?
Yes.
So does anybody have any questions or problems with what's being appropriated?
I wrote about, there's one uh that's uh, news for looking at salary, that I don't think we're gonna get a whole lot of, you know, you know, people applied. I don't think it's a temporary job, but that, you know, was just a really desperate, which is kind of why I'm being lazy and starting up a budget, but if we take the surplus from the DMV, we can put it in one of those buckets that we can use as a council. Then we have the ability to offer it or that surplus or determine if we could anyways, but yeah, so.
So that would be the public hearing version.
Yeah.
Where we have that extra.
No, the hyson.
I understand.
Yeah, because the hyson.
But I feel like. I know, but that thirty two thousand.
It's been spread out already.
It's been spread out.
In this. Yes, cuz he he had a he had, it's it's balanced, pretty close to balance to start with because he had some ideas on spending.
So what what they're saying now, it's the thirty two thousand is not there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's well taken.
Yeah, in the.
What he just said.
Yes.
So in the.
Yeah, yes, cuz Hyson recommended uh the Hyson amendment.
The Hyson.
Recommended uh cutting DMV, which allows a thirty two thousand.
And that really was something with services, right?
That's why I was saying in the public hearing version, that thirty two thousand that got it reallocated.
Well, what they saw on the.
Well, it's been advertised.
Yeah, that's been advertised.
All right, that's correct. You're correct.
Yeah.
I think we should s- we should start from the Hyson version, though, because it has the reduction in revenue as well.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't go at eight forty one spending without throwing yourself in the hole. Because we don't have a forty one in revenue anymore. It's easier to work. You take the MV away and you balance that um what's that, eight sixteen instead. But the first page with the highlights, you can look at that and see where that shift is, because we highlighted it on the Hyson amendment.
They did, yeah.
So if you're looking at the Hyson amendment, what got highlighted, it primarily went to capital projects and uh police.
Yeah. Put that out to everybody, so.
Yeah, I I just.
Usually lets you look at it.
I just did the highlights today to try to show what was different between the two.
Show where the highlights are.
Your your cap- your parks improvements capital spend is is thirty thousand dollars different. Um, no DMV, there's four thousand for the police and four thousand cushion. That basically what changed.
Hello, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Um, Chief Jenkins requested sixty three hundred dollar increase in his budget. And we're talking about four thousand. Um, is there any way to, you know, to pick up the extra?
I think you had a you had a couple of line item reductions. Didn't you say it was on that four thousand? Let's we make sure that we got everything.
I was looking at the numbers, Mary. So we got IP one, we got four two, we got four thousand. Uh, the part pound for the Fourth of July, still on the Hyson ones, he wrote, I mean, at least a thousand there for overtime and meals were the.
I wish they had the numbers. Is that under the police department chief? Where is this number for the?
Police operations, I'll be flipping until you see a police department.
I I have police department.
Yeah, and then go down.
Pages aren't numbered.
Oh.
Here it is.
Not police department.
All right, we're talking about some things.
Um, Fourth of July.
Oh, I get it. I got it.
They'll show Steve, I don't.
I got it.
But I need the least.
Yep.
Hmm.
Then I had um oh, I see. Orange, I had thirty thousand.
Thirty needs are.
I do.
And or is the um the armor, is that included in uniform or do you have that somewhere separate?
So the body armor, I I bought that ten thousand dollar no max running spot.
Does need to show in budget as expected federal revenue and then expected spend. So I'll go back up here to revenue and get us some uh, Justice Department revenue.
So it should do about ten ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So where's the net revenue going to?
Um.
That goes into the uniforms and a.
Back as federal revenue.
Yeah, in the first page, right?
So that's another thirty five hundred?
Ten, ten thousand.
No, ten thousand. That's an additional line item, right, under revenue?
And do you want to call that operations? Is it like uniforms or do you want to call it like a capital thing, like closer to a vehicle park? They like they, it's expensive and it lasts a long time. Does that feel like capital?
No, probably.
More so than.
We're just like in the spot.
Okay.
I just don't need body armor and a wisp shield. It all has to be, they put it in, it can be purchased, all has to be uh gun violence, probably, what was the best, what was the shields? Those type of things.
Council, does that cross your threshold? Does that does that feel like a capital expenditure that you want to look at that way, or does it feel more like pants and boots?
That, no, and especially if it's coming from brand money.
Yeah, we don't need to see that.
Biggest question I have is where you have on that front page for the capital.
Uh-huh.
For which part, chief? I'm sorry?
Uh, first page, under capital improvements, the police department, so.
Okay.
The, the vehicle costs?
Vehicle. So, we're still building that far out.
Yeah.
And I should, starting with some of the invoices, then like I just said, you and Javier wanted the invoices for the computer.
Yep. Hmm.
I mean, I, the, the goal of the plan was to have that vehicle built out by the end of May, June, with it's not. And we can, what's the process for reappropriating some of that funding from last year, but. Into the, but it's rolled over, so we can pay for those expenses.
Let's see, let's see what this. No, see what the, cuz the, the USDA will not give us that money until everything is spent. We've already spent half of it, but there's probably thirty thousand more dollars of spend on that project. Which if the work's not done until after July, has to be on this budget. And then, so that, that'll create another seventy thousand dollars of revenue coming in and thirty thousand dollars of spend. If that's, if you really think it's not gonna happen until after July first.
I'm just playing for the worst. I hope for the best, and the projection is in the May, June.
Hmm.
But anything can happen, and I just don't wanna see us get caught short in it. On that vehicle bill, the money's in the issue budget, and it's not gonna get split, let's say it doesn't. How do we just reappropriate to next year?
That, that might be a good example of when a supplemental makes sense, because we're, we're trying to get it done this year, it's in this budget.
And, and it's, it's still in the town treasury, so if you just do an appropriation.
Right.
It supplements your, your, your resolution.
But it, it would be.
That would be a surplus in this year's budget.
Right.
Right, that would have to be rolled over to next year.
Has to be appropriated to that particular purpose.
It's gonna, it's, it's creating a deficit threat in this year, cuz right now we've bought a car and haven't been paid. So we're out, we're short thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, we just, we have to wait until we're finished, cuz it's still getting painted and installed.
I'm gonna send you a link for a second.
Yeah.
I'm not just. Who is doing it?
Hurry up.
This, well, you're searching July first, do you give me any kind of guarantee?
Where's my card?
Guarantee, because all the equipment's gonna have to be bought and sent, you just, you'll get.
It's a supply chain problem.
Yeah, and you'll candidate.
What we did.
So, when original and plenty.
No.
So the projection is end of the month, June, to have it done. I hope, I just don't want us to get caught with a pension and not have plenty for worst case scenario, if it's not done, what happens?
Yeah.
What happens, you understand?
Next Friday.
Next.
The nineteenth.
We'd love for this to be done before you to be.
Yeah.
It's.
I know, but.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
But what happens if, if it hasn't been appropriated, but is a carryover from last year? I mean, what happens if that?
It, it's gonna create, it, it might put us in deficit for this year, where we, we expected to get a seventy thousand dollar check from USDA, but we haven't, so we'll end.
Do we pull from reserves to cover?
Yeah, because we, we've already bought.
And then we put it back when we get the money from.
There you go.
Cuz ha- half the project is in this year and half of it is in the other, so it's, it would be good news for next year, cuz we're gonna get seventy, but only pay thirty.
Yeah, but really, if it has to go back to reserves, it should go back to reserve, right? It's not good news, it's all net zero.
Yeah, it wa- it washes, it washes out, um.
So we don't really have to do anything to the budget? I, I mean, it'll.
That's appropriate.
Yeah, you, you do have to do something when, when you figure out what it is.
So this year, when we have the deficit, we'll pull from reserves to cover the deficit, should that happen. And we appropriate more next year and we'll have a surplus. If we have a surplus, it goes back into reserves to cover what we took out.
This, this budget doesn't have half a police car in it, cuz we were expecting to get that done now.
So, if my, what I was saying before, that I wanna get the stuff, people now, like, we might not really answer to this before.
Yeah, she's, she's gonna tell the shop to, you know, please hurry up, but we don't know if we're gonna get it.
Towards middle, towards the end of May, and I'm gonna check on the status, so I'll let you know, the council know, uh, at our next workshop, uh, work session.
And they paid us.
But we had hoped to approve this next session, right? So we need to know before next.
Before Monday.
Monday. Otherwise, we have to appropriate for that extra thirty thousand to make sure you're covered. And then we'd have to understand that we're gonna pull from reserves to cover the deficit. And that, that money is not a heyday, it goes back into reserves to cover what we pulled from our savings account.
Right.
There you go, exactly.
We had to do the same thing with the streetscape project. We took a whole bunch out of the Caldwell fund. And finish up the project, and then we've got reimbursed.
It's not unusual.
It's, no, 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 and I understand that it's, it's not unusual that it happened, I just don't know how much of a change we need to do to this before Matt and he.
Well, we just need to build the thirty thousand dollars in as an appropriation, I think it's a safeguard.
Yeah, if, if the, if the grant does end up behind schedule, that's not difficult as a supplemental appropriation to do. In the summer, and, and Javier's got those grant notes, we've been keeping all of the seats on this.
So we don't have to do it.
That's right. I think, I think we, if you're, if you're hoping that things are still gonna go according to plan, you can stick with this draft.
And then you can do a backup for the supplemental appropriation.
Okay.
From reserves, if you have to.
Right, okay.
Which, given the uncertainty, is, makes sense.
Okay.
I think, Matt, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we leave it as, at, what is it, fifteen? Is that the line item? What?
It's divided into. The, um, and the fifteen thousand dollar spend is an expected donation to pay down the loan, right, sir? Is that still on track? Sorry, you're doing too many. Still has the minor setup.
We're.
The vehicle equipment and mobile signage of this police's right outside.
You know, this?
Yeah, police vehicle.
It's the, uh, it's the capital.
Under capital improvements.
Okay.
The cash donation.
So, he asked a question about the fifteen thousand dollars?
Uh, cash, cash donation to pay down a loan. Still.
That's all, still.
I, I, I'm gonna take this, that's probably, uh, something empty anyway, I, I, I've heard it all along, it, it's a big one about municipal buildings, seventy-five thousand. We just made that zero.
True.
That's a, that's.
That's for the solar, right?
For the solar, and that's so tricky, and, and I, I think we're gonna need bids on that and study on that, and, and talk to the people who have solar. You know, it takes years and years to get back on that, so, I mean, that's a nice gesture, but I think, uh, we know nothing about that, and, uh. Seventy-five, it might be eighty-five, and there might be subsidies and, you know, sometimes the government has these, uh, buybacks or whatever, so. I mean, I, I think that might, that sounds like a fire order, that like police or.
Hello, Matthew?
And here's a guy who knows about solar.
Hello, Matthew?
Matthew?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, you're talking about solar panels now, and now, we, we got a grant for that, how much was that grant?
Yeah, it, it shows on both the revenue and spending side of your budget. The same, the same USDA program that supports the police car, they're happy for us to come back again on building improvements. So if the, if those are cut from the spend, they do also need to cut from the revenue. But this is one where the, the feds would pay up to fifty thousand dollars out of that seventy or seventy-five of the cost, so it.
But this would be a net savings, right?
And, and it reduces the electric bill, yeah. Um, if you take it out of the budget, it just makes it look smaller.
So it's a seventy thousand dollar expenditure, uh, and we got a fifty thousand dollar grant, so it costs us twenty, right?
Right.
Twenty-five.
No. Don't even, don't even think about it.
Take it out, Eddie, is that what you're saying?
I, I've got solar panels, I wish I'd never seen them. Um, just don't think about it.
I've heard that from other people.
Yeah, just, just, you know.
So take it out of the revenue and expense, and let's see what it looks like.
We can study it.
Really, I mean, you, I mean, you know, you guys know me, I'm, I'm trustworthy. Don't do it because it, it works in the summertime, it don't work in the winter time, it doesn't work with the summer, it don't work with the ice, it don't work with the snowing. And sometimes it just doesn't work, so don't do it.
All right.
It has a lifespan, too, like, twenty years or something.
Yeah, ten years. And then you gotta dispose of it and with a hazmat suit and send it back to China. Thank you.
All right, okay, so Matt, you took that out of there.
Yeah, both, both sides.
Revenue and expenditure, oh, okay, so, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, so can we go ahead and say that? And the administrative side, we're square that that's. Okay. Are there any other questions on their administration?
No, but I do have a question now with the ten thousand in the federal that we added. Oh, okay.
Admin.
Okay.
Looking at back of, uh, federal, sorry.
Okay, are we okay on appropriations for administration?
I feel like we're working with a new budget plan right now, so I wanted.
Is there anything there that would change?
Taking out the.
You have a lot of room in your ceiling now.
Because we took out fifty thousand.
We both.
From revenue.
Right.
We, that would have been a grant, but then that's twenty-five thousand.
That we get back.
That we get back.
That's right.
And we also put in that ten K from the.
Yep.
From the police, right, I'm just wondering what our new number.
So right now, you're, you're in the black, you're good at seven fifty-five. You've just made the whole budget smaller, but it's still balanced.
What's this surplus?
Three.
Well, three?
Thirty-one hundred.
What did you put there, overtime for the fourth down for?
Fifteen hundred.
Is that enough, chief? Are you sure? Okay, so, but what I'm trying to get to is if there are no more administration costs, we can say, okay, that's done. If there are no expenditures that we wanna consider from the police department, we can consider that done, we can take it bucket by bucket.
Right.
All right. Did we return to a three percent from a two percent? Does anybody have any comments there?
Uh, gee, I think, uh, good, since we're, you know, if we have a surplus, I think, it's even going through the bonus or something.
Bonus won't count towards their pension.
Yeah. Well.
Okay, some people say so, what?
So, I mean, a pension, they, I don't think you say so much of the.
Exactly.
A two percent.
But we don't affect our boss.
We are bill.
Just a whole lot of money out. We, we, we can't tighten our budget to the point that people need that work.
Yeah.
Giving somebody a two percent raise is.
I think public.
Saying.
I think public safety is priority number one, that's just my personal feeling.
I, I, I mean.
What does it do if we don't?
It's seventeen hundred dollars.
Because that. They're what, and getting other people coming in, realizing they're not bad.
It's seventeen hundred dollars, guys.
Three percent.
Three percent, let's put it at three and let's work with that. If we come into a problem, Eddie, do you have any comment on that?
I mean, we should take twenty-five thousand on the solar packs, you know what I mean? Um. The cost of living, i- i- they're. It, it's like they're making less money.
All right, let's leave it in as a, okay. Okay, so that means administration, check. Police, if, Chief Jenkins, if you have nothing else, then check, and we're right now, please. Pardon? I don't know, I don't think we've, let's just go back and check. Okay, police department done. Go on one. I'm just looking at the police department.
I didn't know that maybe that's police department, I was always looking, believe, better have one.
Yeah, just some of the, like, the, the police car is in, is in town.
That's right, well, we started at police department and then had to jump back for the vehicle. Four thousand.
Police operations.
For IT maintenance. In this version. Does it need to be forty-two?
There's not forty-two, man, I just wanted to make sure.
And you, you pressed that out exactly, I know, you're right.
Okay.
So it's forty-two or what is that?
Forty-two.
Pricing in advance.
And then we move from zero to fifteen hundred on the part time for Fourth of July, correct?
Oh, we did fifteen hundred?
Yes, Matt put that at fifteen hundred to make sure we're covered, I agree.
And then you got this big increase to the uniforms because it's also the heavy.
So we moved from ten to twelve-five, but that's covered, right? That'll be covered under a grant, so the revenue should be offset.
Yeah, not the. Yes, twenty-five hundred is your, um, uh, boots and pants and things, and then ten thousand is a lot of, uh, armor. Yeah.
Does that work, chief?
Yes, that's.
Okay. All right, anything else to the police department budget?
My name is. So, but is, are you looking at the, what are you looking at?
Yeah.
Thirty-five is actually going down to.
Right.
The cash.
Okay, I'm sorry, that notice confusing those on it. All right.
Okay, now I'm looking, I'm all.
This is police operations.
Okay, police. Are we working off the Heisen?
Yes, yes.
I have administration, capital improvements, senior development, DMV, so.
I think it's the page that's in your writing.
That's fine. I have police department, I don't see operation.
I'm sorry, that, that, that's department operations, where, um, capital has the police capital in it. And then the category that's called police department is their wages and non-capital stock.
Right, and where are the uniforms and boots?
That's, that's this, that's this one.
In which bucket?
Operations. It's in uniform.
I have uniforms, clothing, boots, bike.
Right.
We moved it from thirty-five to twenty-five, correct?
And then added ten thousand more. That's the, those are the grand items.
So it's twelve five, right?
Right, correct.
So two oh five.
You're saying there's, yeah, so this one, I, there's thirty-five, hundred, twenty-five, but add the ten thousand dollars, that's going from company to language.
So we added that in the revenue section.
Okay, but where are we adding that in the police department?
In uniforms.
So it should be twelve thousand.
Yes.
That's what it is, yes.
That's what I was confused at, too, okay. And then vehicles, gas and fluid, ten thousand, thirty-seven hundred for insurance and five thousand for vehicle repairman. Right?
And that's the, that insurance savings is what I set over from admin. They're putting their insurance policy in their budget. Make it more clear, all the costs associated with their vehicles go together.
So they pay for that out of their budget, right, gotcha, okay. All right, so now, are we done with police department? Yes, okay, administration's done.
Can we excuse Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, Mr. Jenkins, if your budget was approved, then you don't need to stay.
Sure. I mean, I love.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'll leave and you can stay and do the rest for me.
All right, so administration's done, wanna do capital?
Yes, let's go through capital improvements.
The, the big change in the amendment here is on Van Cleve nature area. This has a much larger, uh, capital line in anticipation of a restroom building or something like that.
I would put that off.
I agree, I think what you were trying to say.
Right, let's put off the restroom.
Yeah.
I don't even speak. Other Van Cleve thing?
Yeah, yeah.
There's road, bridge, trail, construction and improvements, the fifteen thousand, is that what we're talking?
And improvements, is that the rest?
Yeah, any kind of Van Cleve nature area construction, are, are there, are there any parks improvements that you wanna go build?
I mean, can we do the maps under this?
Sure. Sure.
Guys, can we do the maps under this? Let's take the fifteen down to four for maps and printing?
Right, well, they, they, I could do under the, uh. They have another stack over here with more parts and trails.
Yeah, like, why don't we just, can we go one by one? And I, I don't remember.
Well, we've gone through the police ones, so we don't have.
Yep, yep, I'll start at the top.
What's the biggest number? Well, uh, yeah, once we took the seventy-five out. And the police was already covered, so the next biggest number is the fifteen under Van Cleve. That's how I judge. Trying to find money for the other things that we might want to fund, right? So if we take that down, Meredith?
Yeah.
To. If we take that down to, let's say, five, then you have ten to. Potentially reallocate to the other. Categories, no, I, I just guess.
Carrying, carrying signs is the biggest ad for the park in the next year.
I feel like.
Signs, maps.
Yeah, I still want like. A. A sign that tells people where, you know, like people still don't know where Van Cleve is.
I'd like to have some money still in there for, for people with disabilities access, but that's actually part of what we wanted to do with the doc. So I think three to five thousand for that should be, should be.
So if we leave four for maps and we leave five for that, that's nine. So then we recoup six out of the fifteen.
Some, some road improvements.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll take the fifteen down to nine. And that's maps. And road improvements.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix this description, so that.
Okay, so that leaves us with six thousand, so there are other columns in here with zeros. So do we want to fill them in?
Not the best form.
Um, so let's, let's go back to what you said, Meredith, to can now, you know, let's go through one by one. Because if we have extra money now, we can potentially fill them in.
So we, we took. The road, bridge, trail, construction improvement from fifteen to now.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
To the six step. Um. Do we have money, and I don't know how much it normally costs. Did they? Put one of the like sidewalk signs up? Like how we have. DMV select or parking or, to say, Van Cleve.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because I, I think part of the problem is people still, like, when you're, when you're driving down Downey Street, you still just don't know where it is.
You want the border street sign?
Yeah, and you, well, I was wondering where, where it says street signs, if that would fall under that or if that had to be like a park.
Yeah, they, they all come from the same catalog. They get a custom printed sign and a whole two, two hundred.
How much, how much does something like that normally cost?
Two hundred for the post, for the post plus the heavy reflective panel.
And we have to add them in there, so that's fine.
So that'll, that'll get you a couple wayfinding signs and then you can still replace a couple when they get bought.
Well, but let's not take, I mean, let's not do everything all in one year, right? I mean, this can be a multi-year initiative. There's two thousand dollars in the budget for signs. How we allocate that? You know, can be done later, right?
So for another five hundred in them?
What other, what other was covered out? Whatever was this two thousand dollars covering?
Getting the map.
Any sign that you might want to, I don't have a, I don't have a question which way.
The maps. Leftover in the nine thousand. The fifteen went down to nine to cover maps and road improvements for ADA access to Van Cleve, right? Six thousand extra. We have two thousand dollars in signs. Those are not allocated for any signs in particular. So we can use those for Van Cleve signs from the street, which are a couple hundred dollars. Okay, so we should have plenty of budget in that two thousand dollar allocation.
Eileen, I would say that, um, we, uh, do need some improvements. To the. Street signs. Um, some are, uh, pretty dilapidated.
Yeah, I agree, Eddie.
You know, we, we need to get some maintenance, you know, figure in our maintenance costs on what we got now.
All right, so if we were to get new signs.
We don't need, nah, nah, I'm not saying new signs, just straighten up the old ones, you know.
Some of them though, Eddie, are very discolored.
Yes, they are.
So I, I mean, some of them may need to be replaced.
But if they're on like two hundred and we got two thousand, it should be covered, we should be all right.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the cost of, you know, refurbishing what we have, you know, would be.
I think what he's talking about is if they're. No, you have to buy new for those.
Coding lines.
But it's, will the two thousand dollars cover a few new signs, right? I think I'm hearing yes, it will.
Take your pick, yeah.
Plus your mind.
Yeah, okay.
Less intended, you have to put them off, too, something, I gotta do that.
Right.
The only thing, the only thing I'm saying is, you know, we need to look at what we've got and take care of what we've got and then, and then replace what we need to.
The other thing that we have nothing is the pump system.
And that's where some of that money should go, that's an important bucket of money. All right, so the pump system right now. Pump system rehab has zero dollars, everyone. That's a big bucket, so.
What needs to be done though?
It, um, it could really use an interior paint job. It, it's been thirty years and it gets this like high heat when the engines run, so the paint all on the inside is just peeling and cracking and there's paint chips every time you go inside.
It doesn't give color.
Yeah.
If somebody walk in there and look at the paint of the ceiling.
It's not shit.
Laying an impression.
Uh, and somebody, somebody.
I've never been in it, I don't know.
It's a big space in there, not really high ceilings and.
That's why it's never been done, it's hard to get to.
So when we say a lot, what, what do you think?
Five thousand?
Thirty thousand, twenty thousand.
Whoa, forty-five.
Twenty-five.
Thousand?
Yeah, paint the interior of that building.
We got a bit there.
Get the volunteers, fire departments, some ladders and paintbrushes.
They do have, they do have ladders.
Well, listen, we can't put twenty-five in there, that's not gonna. Let's put in five thousand. And if there's volunteer day, I'll come down and paint too.
And, and that, that does give us guidance on how we do the procurement. If you're talking to a commercial painter, you're like, sort of.
Well, you can get it.
It's great, don't you know?
Yeah, sorry, even bare concrete would look better.
Okay, anything else on the pump system though?
I would like eventually a camera at least on the interior of that, and I don't know if it'd be helpful. For you guys on the outside, because that's kind of a central point, you may put some money outside. I don't know what that would cost, maybe it's too much and if you guys aren't interested in it, but maybe wise.
Be cheap, aren't they? I mean. Costco there. Yeah.
The X-Files have, there's bridges there.
Absolutely.
I don't want to talk to you behind the lights.
I don't need dark.
Well, do. But when it, because you guys have a system developed already, right?
Security in that building.
Not, have lots.
Then let's, let's keep standing there and let's try.
That's a big operation, anyway, boys.
You get alerts on your phone.
On the outside it can be, you know, damaged or.
Well, I've got a camera system for, for home and, you know, I can put them anywhere I want.
That's true, yeah.
Right? I can put them inside, I can put them outside, it doesn't matter. And I get updates on my phone when there's an alert and somebody triggers those things. Yeah.
I mean, but when you put the cameras, don't they have to wire them into the house?
No, it's wireless. They link into my Wi-Fi system and it was super easy, there's no wires.
Well, if we're, we're decommissioning the DMV, this, this facility has, uh. We had to put a decent security system into it to camera every, all the DMV spaces. Take that out, we can maybe move it. We're already paying Meacham's River for several alarm systems and there's a, um. There's a flood sensor alarm that they monitor in the pump stations. We already have a security company on contact over there. I don't think it would be hard to talk with them about upgrading what they monitor, but they already monitor. Uh, that fire alarm and that camera.
Yeah, they monitor just somebody breaking into a place, you know, so.
Well, to Alex's point, we don't want that vandalized, that's, uh.
Well, also you have.
Now you can put it high enough and point, you know, angle it down so that it'll cover. The area that you need to cover. A community member or somebody in the community told me it's very dark back there behind Canal Basin. There used to be lights that were on at night that are no longer being turned on at night. I don't know who or what or where that's done. But that's, um. That can be a problem, so I don't know, can, can we follow up on that somehow?
So, are you talking about the park?
Five thousand's enough what we want to do here, do you want to try to pull in someone else?
Which is great, for five K?
That's good. Well, we have five ready to do, right?
What did you? What did you do for long term?
I was thinking, put the whole six that we saved.
Yeah.
From the fifteen, put all the six in the pump. And then whatever we can do in the six, do within the six. And then anything else will have to be a multi-year initiative.
Okay, so, so.
So the next year.
So now that.
No, we. We are. No, we went from fifteen to now. And I thought, oh, we had six left. And the six now we're saying to put in the bucket for the pumps.
I just had that, thought we were putting that in the bucket.
No, the nine is the bucket for the maps. It's three or, or four for maps and five for ADA access to Van Cleve.
So that nine is also that.
Yeah.
That's the maps, four K for maps and five K for road improvements for ADA. Okay, okay, so that's in there, so write that, we're still doing that. And then this K, that savings, we really have to pay to the pump.
So it's a net zero on the appropriation.
I understand.
Will you know that?
Yes.
Door, hell.
What a supervisor's knows.
All right, so under, uh.
Do you all have any idea what a new pump would cost? A hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Plus. Hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah.
Probably.
It, it's, it's the, it's the biggest. Long-term liability we got. They're thirty years old, we gotta have.
Hello, Matt? Matt?
Yes, sir.
I, um, I talked with the people that manufactured those pumps. Um, we have three pumps. Those three pumps are no longer, um, available, they've, they've. No any more, so we, we would have to replace them with totally new ones. And, um. They quartered me a figure, uh, transportation, um, and the pumps and installation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Haven't forgotten better.
That's better.
It's good news.
Uh, can we, I wonder if we can get a grant for some of them?
Yeah.
I wonder, that looks like a prime market for.
That the urban floor engineers may also.
Have to look at the one that. They, they certainly inspect them and we, we will, we will know when they're on their last legs. They're soldering on just fine, so that doesn't need to be an extra.
Everything else, so there's a couple other zeros. Blood control reserves. So there's no.
This is, uh, it's like two thousand. This is a, a net to, a net to a savings account. It's, it's modest, but.
James River waterfront is zero of that?
To Mr. Heisen's question, um, any other, you know, trees that we wanted to buy, have you put in there?
I'm wondering about the, uh. Mint Creek tree planting for that hazard management plan that we did. Remember that?
Mm-hmm.
We have to plant trees over at Mint Creek as one of our. Good night, Chief.
I mean, we can contact Arbor Day Foundation. I mean, trees shouldn't be an extent of our Arbor Day Foundation, wants to find out, you know, find out that we want to.
Yeah.
Trees, like flood control trees and things like that, they, they'll donate.
I've got, I've got.
Take that out Arbor Day. Would you?
We've got a friend right here in town that's big with, with tree stewards. He's a tree steward. She has access to trees.
Okay.
Name's PJ. Um. Johansson. She lives out on, uh. Langhorn Road. Or on the riverside of the intersection with Route Six. Well, PJ.
Yeah, she was worried about.
I suggest before you do the next one, I suggest that we get community development right now and get some of the easy ones out of the way. If there's any difficulty.
All right.
It's left, it's gone, Farmers Market. I don't have any issues with that.
Any issues with Farmers Market? I don't.
I think we're sitting down, considering, we'll do it.
Right. Lot in emergency operations?
Since their operations budget, I, I checked, I checked this with Mr. Carr, but this is the, the non-capital, just how to operate what they do.
Okay, so this is operations?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no problem with operations.
I'll be, I think that's our requirement.
Absolutely.
I need to take some goodies pattern and.
Yeah.
All right, municipal building? Cleaning services, elevator maintenance, these are all pretty low, any issues with these?
Nope.
Okay, check.
Hang on, hang on.
Where are we going? Municipal building.
I took, I took the utilities down a little bit because I thought they would be solar powered when I put this.
Back up?
Put this electric bill back up a little bit.
Okay. So we're going from eighteen to twenty-one?
Just a little bit more each one, but I was careful about what I thought we would say.
That's a good point. Under municipal building, last line item, utilities goes from eighteen to twenty-one because we're not doing solar. All right, parks and trails, should we leave that?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I think we'll have this.
All right, let's go back to that. Uh, we're trying to get all the easy ones out of the way. Street, department, maintenance, uniforms, all of that seems pretty basic.
It, it has gotten to be a bigger total, and I know government services have put a lot of discussion about what the best way to do this is. It's, it's worth pointing out that this position cost has gotten high. And if you. I, I, I know you, you've got unhappy citizens and for, for almost a hundred thousand dollars, maybe you could do this another way. Do you want to raise that contacting discussion?
Is it, is it just that we, we can do it another way or do we need somebody different doing?
Well, the chief of law. Wonder, huh, guys? Um. We can add that conversation even if we improve that part of it.
Not sure.
Are you telling me?
That's right. That's. So we can revisit his contract or have another one, but revisit.
That's, that position cost.
Call everybody out if anybody wants to slide. Cody and Hobbie, I think you said that a lot?
No.
Pretty close.
But I second what we said a little more.
Pretty close.
It, it, it's like two hundred a year.
And our, our. It's, it's public. And our, and our, our newest police officer is in that same area. That's, that's like.
That seems crazy.
And the police officers?
The youngest, the younger police officer makes.
That seems crazy to me.
That's, that's sort of like living wage.
One voyage, I'm not saying that we shouldn't pay that kind of money. For maintenance. I don't know that we pay that kind of money for the. Level of maintenance.
That was the gist of the government services.
I mean, it's horrible. It's, and I don't, but when I say that. Maybe those comparisons are, I'm not saying that one is more deserving as a John. I think everybody does.
Yes, we know which is, but if you look at pre-COVID, pre-COVID. Yes, we know, but if you look at pre-COVID, pre-COVID was what, thirty one?
It was a part-time job at that point.
Okay, then it went to forty five, that's a full-time job?
Yeah.
Do we need a full-time person?
That's a question.
It's a question.
Excellent question, do we track some of those things out of robbery?
It is a, that's a, that's a maximum for the department, so any cost-saving changes that you made in the future could be done and it would just reduce that spend, so you you'd score the efficiency later, yeah.
So do you want to leave that budget item as it is and deal with it later?
Yep.
Yep, okay. I'm good. We'll appropriate the money, but it can be reallocated later.
You could.
Yeah, okay, let's take it back to the forty six. Yeah, no, you're right, you're right, Bill, take out the increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't forty six.
Yep. Yep.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question, why would we keep that the same?
Well, keep it the same, no, we're gonna keep it the same as it was, there, there, there's no reason.
But why would we give everybody else an increase in the budget?
Because of the, these old pay things, things that days.
Is he not performing?
And we, we, the salaries too high for that category. Do you guys want to make this decision now or you know, revisit this?
I think the, I think the increase isn't necessary. It's not that much, we're not talking that much money. Okay, what else?
We're gonna be, we wouldn't rely on that.
But does it need to go up out? What's our surplus? What's our total? Do we have any money left over?
I, I plan it on those double events, absolutely. If we're gonna put surplus anywhere, I'd see it in a set or two, two, you know.
Well, we've already got, we've got the police back up to three, so that I feel better about. If you need extra money, we have a little bit of wiggle room here in the budget, let us know right now.
We can, yeah, okay, uh, fifteen hundred?
For what?
For.
Events and tourism is all together, I don't.
Fourth of July, have five thousand, do you want to bump it up to sixty five?
Yes.
Okay, let's bump that up to sixty five, let's see where we get.
We have uh, you've certainly been on the details with that and done well with donations.
Alright, anything else in tourism? Yes.
That's, that's enough, what else?
Recall the ongoing expense, I think I, I think.
I think that, I think that the ongoing expense was slightly low, lower than that, that should cover it.
Okay.
What did we put around twenty hours?
We bumped it up to sixty five hundred from five thousand. And that's the only change so far in that category. Any other changes? Okay, check, town planning?
That's almost nothing this year, this this line has been real big in the past when we've had large planning grants, but those have all um run their course.
So where are we, where are we missing? Capital improvements, without it, no. Community development? Yeah. Wait a minute, fire department staying the same?
And there are any, we will, I mean, we can, I assume we can't.
It's a state pass through, they give it to us and we give it to them.
Yeah, but, okay, and then. Raise and a ball? We've already got.
This one, money awarded to nonprofit?
Yeah.
Board of Economy, this has ten pounds of budget, there's nobody in that office this year. And we should, the Lord of the County also has to be paid here, there's, there's no, well, nothing for the art museum, nothing for the boys and girls, athletic facilities. I don't, I mean, unless we have, we are doing that terribly, I don't think we should be doing that anymore. There's, everybody has got, there's a lot of nonprofits here with the scan, you know, a lot of that.
Well, we have some, we have some wiggle room here, we can do a different thing, but we have been traditionally supporting the Boys and Girls Club. In the strategic priorities, we talked about community connection, we talked about supporting at-risk groups, children and whatnot, I think it's important.
I think whoever comes begging, be given that money.
This is begging, Bill, fine, let's go around the table like we did before.
I'm gonna tell you that you need to give something to the Boys and Girls Club, you're the one that sat in the strategic planning session and somebody said, what's our priority? Children from the back room, Bill Heisen, children, that's right, children is our priority. You said it right there in that strategic planning session, now you don't want to give one dang on penny to the Boys and Girls Club?
That's just planned, that's there, what about the basketball program, pro baseball program?
We have extra. We have.
They have sponsors. Yeah, let's get out, let's finish this thing up.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, or maybe, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, no, yes, 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 Eddie?
No.
No, okay, the yes half that, by that, I think it stays.
Yes.
Right? Okay. So where do we get with this? Is that, is that the end of it? Do we have any other columns, any other line, which ones, Alex, sorry?
Parks and uh.
Parks and Rec.
Let me just say this, let me just say this in Bill and Eddie's expense, because we have a budget that we can still talk about it, if you're just saying.
It's a good. But you do think it's important, it is a, I mean, so many children take advantage of that program. In our community, in the tri-county, you know, community, it's, it seems to me a no-brainer, but they.
Have students go there, thirty five dollars a year.
A year in the club.
Yeah.
They got so much, maybe twenty million just last year, they got, thought about that.
I am on the advisory committee, I have the treasury support and there is no twenty million dollars anywhere.
Alright, let's take it down, let's take it down a notch, one at a time.
Like, like, yeah. I know, we still just have that.
And we have the yays and nays, let's just move on.
Hold on, you're, you're, you're a member.
It doesn't matter, he, he doesn't, Bill, we don't have enough yet.
I don't go on it unless I have a tie.
Bill, I asked him, I asked him.
And he'll just, and I think how much money they have, every Boys and Girls Club, I got this scout who worked for the Boys and Girls Club for years. Please, you finish, because I don't understand, you said, you said he has so much money, it's twenty million dollars. Every Boys and Girls Club runs as its own entity, if the Boys and Girls Club of America is twenty million dollars, that does not mean Boys and Girls Club of Scottville.
Right.
Plenty of that money, each one runs as an individual entity, with its own directors, its own money, its own family. So, so I don't know where you're getting twenty million dollars from, but I just promised him that Scottville Boys and Girls Club does not have.
So parks and trails, I think it's fine.
Park and trail, which parks and trails?
Okay, Canal Basin Square, a thousand, five thousand for park maintenance, three thousand for tree maintenance.
We have capital expenditures.
Yeah, yeah, so this, this would just be a, a tube of caulk or some hardware if you do a small repair, your bigger fixes are.
Any other comments? Then I think we have the appropriation for next year's budget.
And your, and your ten thousand for the good, bottom line.
Okay, so we have ten thousand in reserves, right, that can be spent, and so Bill, to your point, if there are groups that need money, they, we can adopt a process for that. But I think Boys and Girls Club is an icon in the community, it is really important for the community. I know a number of mothers who take advantage of that and I think it's just goodwill from the community to support.
Baseball, stocks and all of that are, like, Boys and Girls Club makes it possible for a bunch of people.
That's right.
And and like, and it would be great if we could find everybody to go play soccer and baseball, I would love that, but.
Close session.
Not for that kind of money, still.
Not, not profits, not, not profits.
Let me say this to be helpful, this again, we know we're all really tired, let's finish.
Let's do this closed se, closed session, if we can ever get into the closed session, it'll last about five minutes, so can we get into the closed session?
Not screaming us?
Well, I'm sorry, you were just screaming at Bill, so.
Everything you fired is understandable, but let's bring it down.
Where's the thing we read?
I got children.
For closed session? Oh, I had it, or maybe, did I bring?
You saved it, that's right, you saved, okay, I'll read it. Uh, I move that our council enter a closed meeting as authorized subsection A of Virginia Code, section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven specifically. Related to reviewing appointments and prospective candidates for employment, is that correct?
Yes.
And in all my favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Hello, Matt? Hello, Matt?
Yeah, yes, sir, we we see, we see you, sir.
Okay, you gotta, you gotta get rid of everybody on this uh Zoom but me.
That's, that's right, um, Matthew, James Exchange, uh, we'll uh, we'll, we'll see you later, thank you.
I think attorney, I'd like to propose to meet.
Okay.
Why, why?
By which the enclosed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by this town council.
You second?
A second.
All in favor? Now we're back in regular session, motion.
You need a roll call in open session.
Yeah, Eileen?
If you were in open session, I hope, right?
Yes, we opened an open session, it's a closed session.
It's just a work session, yeah.
Vote to see, to have uh de interim come in.
No, no, just, just, this, this seems to be roll call.
Oh.
That previous motion.
Yes.
Aye. I don't get to vote, yeah.
Easily.
It's like.
No.
Now we're in open session, it's a work session, we normally don't have a motion during a work session.
We'll go home, I've never had that happen before, what happens if he votes no? Mark, Mr. Payne voted no.
What, what are we, started, no?
Did they, but they're voting same, closed session?
No, he, he dissents that we spoke about something we shouldn't have. Is that what you meant?
Eddie?
Yes. No, my, my question was, we, we never decided uh on a interim or the transition.
Well.
We have to have an interview.
Well, that's just a possibility, we just started a possibility.
She's coming in next Monday to meet everybody and we'll vote on it.
Well, definitely.
One of us would swing later. We, we, we just talked about all that. Luckily, everybody dropped off.
Mister uh, Mister President of the Council, paying a uh motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'm reluctantly making a motion to reserve, resign, uh, whatever.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn of work session.
Oh, I don't know, I'm just.